Need a motion to come out of recess?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor. I'm going to get by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Welcome to the budget meetings. And first on our agenda is the courts. Mr. DeSvile. Did I pronounce that right?
DeSvile, yes. Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. I appreciate that. Good morning, everyone. I have with me our court administrator, Kristi Erdman. If you have some specific questions about the numbers in our budget request, Kristi's the expert on that for our system. So I'll ask her to address any of those specific questions. Essentially, what we tried to do for you this year is keep numbers sort of in a flat, as flat growth as we possibly could, understanding and knowing what we've gone going on. I will tell you, while our numbers don't necessarily reflect an increase in cases, the complexity has increased. And I'm sure you heard that from the state's attorney's office when you talked to them as well. And the more complex the case is, the more costly it is for you in terms of court appointments, jury panels, those sorts of things. Let me give you an example. In the month of July, you know, in years past, when I started, I've been doing this job about 10 years now. When I started, if we had one murder trial a year, that would tend to be a big year for us. In July, we have alone two murder trials that the court system is trying. And so that sort of tells you where we're at in terms of expectation for complexity of cases and how that may cost you moving forward. We've tried to keep it, again, as I mentioned, as flat as possible. My expectation is, as we go through some changes with the folks that you're working with, with Mr. Vargo taking the attorney general's position for a period of six months. I yesterday appointed his chief deputy, Laura Retzel, to be the acting state's attorney during Mr. Vargo's leave of absence. We did that in consultation with Mr. Vargo and the senior staff at his office. I believe Ms. Retzel will keep the ship sailing in the direction that you folks have come to expect over the course of the next six months. And it was my pleasure to be able to participate by signing that order. Statutes in the state of South Dakota give that authority to the presiding judge of the circuit in those circumstances in which there is a, an opening in the office of the state's attorney. I've done this previously in Fall River County. This was the first time I've done so in Pennington. But I believe Ms. Retzel will serve you well over the course of the next six months until Mr. Vargo returns. With that, it would be my hope to answer any questions that you might have about sort of where we're at with the system and what the budget proposal looks like. Again, if you have any specific questions about the numbers themselves, I'll have Ms. Erdman, our court administrator, address those for you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
So Judge, court-appointed attorney, I see an increase of just 5%.
Correct.
And then on the A and N attorney, 154, 5%. And then the budget for the courts, 130, 15%. I just wondered why that one is, is high and the other ones are a bit lower.
That reflects, Commissioner Ross, that first comment that I made about the complexity of cases. For example, the murder cases that we're trying, we have to call in a significantly larger number of jurors to address those. So those reflect your juror numbers increasing. We have some facility needs. We rent space to pick juries for those cases. We've been using the old Herberger's store, for example, at, at the mall. It gives us some parking. It gives us some restroom facilities. We had some really great cooperation with the folks at the Central States Fair, and we used those until we had one last March where we were using exterior porta potties for jurors when it was about 40 degrees outside. And, believe me, we heard about that. So with that, we've moved to kind of a little more comfort level for the jurors that we're asking to come in. And we've been using some of that extra space that the mall has made available for us. So those kinds of things are why that increase is a little higher than what I'll call the inflationary increase for the rest of the services.
Okay, that makes sense. Appreciate the answer.
You bet.
You know, the way our budget hearing's been going, and this has been kind of an informational presentation initial, and the commission's going to end up digging deeper, as you know, later on in the year into more of the budget. So probably more questions will be coming later on.
Understood.
Possibly.
And we're here to answer those. And again, if you have any specific number of questions, either Kristi or I will be happy to assist.
Thank you very much. Could you give us a little update on your recovery from the COVID days? Just so we, we know the other, the state's attorney's office and the public defender's offices are starting to get back in and, is the flow good, starting to happen?
Commissioner LaCroy, you know, we have had, you know, the obligation during COVID to make sure that the courts are open and that we provide access to people. And we've done so in ways that we hope moved cases along that made some sense, but also recognized, you know, as the folks that were asking to come in. You know, my personal perspective has always been that, I'll call them the voluntolds of our system, our jurors. We want to make sure that they feel the most comfortable coming in because the rest of us choose to work in the system on a daily basis. And we expect the risks and the inconveniences that happen as part of that. But those jurors don't. So we wanted to make sure that they felt comfortable working with us. And we've done things like distance seating. We connect rooms by technology so we can pick juries. Instead of maybe having 100 people in one courtroom, we might use three courtrooms to do that so people can spread out a little bit. And we've been able to manage really pretty well doing that. We feel relatively caught up. We have a series of cases every week that we have scheduled for trials. Some weeks, those cases resolve. But if you want your case to be tried, you want your case to be heard by a judge, we have been able to accommodate that even during COVID and with some of the changes that we've had. We've had some really great partnerships with the folks that we work with, including the two offices you mentioned, including the folks on the sheriff's staff as part of transport. We connect a lot with his office in the jail in terms of technology now. So that's been helpful, I think, in terms of moving folks through the system a little more rapidly, as well as doing so in a safe manner. And I mean, safe not only in terms of COVID, but in terms of the public that deal with the folks that we have coming in on a daily basis. They like that kind of security aspect to remote hearings. And we connect through the jail for that. So we've been doing a pretty good job, I think, keeping on top of things, recognizing that we needed to do so. I, I think we're going to continue to do some of those things moving forward because quite candidly, as I mentioned, the jurors are the folks that I'm most concerned about because we require them to come in. And they really aren't going to be in the position anymore where they're going to want to sit cheek to jaw together in a courtroom. That's just not where we're at anymore, I don't think. And we hear that from them. And so some of the coordination of using multiple courtrooms to connect people by technology is going to continue to do that, which creates a little bit of a, I'll call it a Tetris effect, if you're familiar with that video game from the early 1980s that our jury clerks use, where they have to drop the pieces in. And we do that with our courtrooms. But they're managing it, they do good work, and we're continuing to keep active and on top of our calendars.
Thank you, Judge. Is there, is there anything else you'd like to share with your staff?
Commissioner, thank you. We appreciate all the support that you give us.
Mr. Chair.
From Stroud.
Are you going to be at the building committee tomorrow, Judge?
I am not. I have court tomorrow.
Okay, well, we'll be discussing the needs assessment, and I'm sure that you need some more room somewhere.
We would, I think the original thought about a brand-new courthouse would be high on my list, but I understand that may not necessarily be the view.
Yeah, I wouldn't hold your breath.
Thank you, Judge. Next on our agenda is emergency management. Give us a minute to find your stuff there, Dustin.
Give you all the time you need, sir. Good morning, Dustin Willie, Pennsyl County Emergency Manager. And you let me know where we need to start. I would start with probably the, well, whatever order you have, have it in, you tell me. Looks like 226.
There we go. Sorry.
So 226, 288 or 285?
This is 285, Dustin.
Yep. That's the, that's the, what I refer to as the big budget, our office budget. Is that where you want to start?
That's the first one in my.
Perfect. Let me know when everyone's there and.
Looking at it earlier, you're good, Dustin.
Seems like you're going down on that one.
Uh, yeah, I'll explain that.
That goes 23.83.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're ready.
That had hike.
Yep.
All right. So this one, the, the presentation was just a little complicated because there are two proposals, and I'll explain that. The, both of them are a decrease over this year's budget. The reason being that there was a special project that the board approved last year for this year's budget, the AV improvements in the, in the EOC space. So that was a very large project, a very expensive project. And so this year's current budget is significantly higher than what my budget normally is because of that one project. So this next year, you see those, the, that, that number decrease. It doesn't mean there's not, you know, incremental increases in the budget inflationary. I like the way Judge DeSvile said that, inflationary increases from what it would have been without that big AV project. But yes, the overall number is, is down from last year because I don't have that big project this year. So hopefully that explains that, that, that significant decrease that you see. The salary numbers are pretty straightforward. Please keep in mind that my salary, the way it works in emergency management with all the cost sharing with the city, my salary is reflected in the 420 line items. The contract is, is where my salary is captured. So my salary is not up in the personnel services, the 410s. And those are all set. You know, the, the commission and, and auditor's office and, and HR let us know what we need to do with our, our folks on pay scales. And then I get that same direction from, from the city as well, from mine. So that's, those numbers are all just following the, the guidance that's provided by, by those two governing bodies. Tried to, to trim where I can trim. I think the, the budget presented is, is reasonable. I'm not asking for any large projects. There is some money set aside to improve some radio communications within the EOC. We've run into a situation where the radio communications in there have not been adequate for law enforcement with some of the events that they've run out of there. We identified the need for two additional radio consoles, and I was able to, to secure one of them through a grant process. And then I have the, the other one as a capital expenditure for next year. So that's in that. I guess really quick, I will say that there is a additional proposal, and I don't know where that's at, if they've seen that, if it's in their packet anywhere.
We have.
We have like a version one and a version two of the 285. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. Just explain what that means.
Okay, so there's a, a second proposal. The second proposal is inexorably tied with fire administration. That's why it makes it kind of a challenge to, to, to present it cleanly. But really, and, and the folks from fire administration will, will present their budget and their case. From emergency management, I will concur with everything they're going to say. The workload in fire administration is untenable with current staff. They need the extra help. And so the proposal on the table, though, is not just fire admin because we share a position, it, it touches both of our offices. So the solution that we're proposing is that the administrative assistant, the current, let me make sure I save this right, but I believe Val is a B 23. Does that sound right? Yep. So, so Val's position is currently the B 23 staff assistant. The proposal is to move that position entirely under fire. Currently, it's 50% EM, 50% fire. And on the EM side, with my budget sharing with the, the city, really, the, the city contributes 25% of that B 23's salary currently. So the proposal is that entire position moves over to fire administration. Fire administration needs that, that, that full-time position. And the, the solution for EM is then to hire a full-time entry-level clerical, so A 13, which is actually our lowest, lowest point of entry on our, on our wage scale. And that position would be split 50% with the city and the county. So overall, in, in subsequent years, and the numbers that I put together don't reflect necessarily what we're spending right now. The numbers I put together are worst-case scenario if the, if the people in those positions take and roll in the, the full benefits package. So I, I don't know what insurance is going to look like for those employees. So I always plan for what the maximum insurance might be if, if the, if the employees take family coverage for health and dental. That's what I budget for. So that's what these numbers reflect. And so what, the, the bottom line is moving the B 23 position totally to fire and EM bringing on a new A 13 position. The recurring cost to the county coffers, the county budget, would be without, without whatever increases we give to our employees, would be $43,620 annually.
Mr. Chair.
Ron Ross.
So Dustin, version one, under salaries and wages, you're saying, you're saying a change of $18,393. And then version two, I just want to make sure I'm looking at this right. You're looking at this right here, salaries and wages. It actually shows going, you're going down 6,707?
What, what number are you on, Ron?
Okay. I'm looking at.
At the back. If you, there's version one and then version two.
Version two is 6,000 negative. Version one should be the 198,475. Version two should be the 22300.
Yeah, this is where I'm looking at, version two, right here.
Because version one is prepared with Val the way it sits.
Version one is no change, just the way we currently are.
Your structure is right now. Version two does not include the new FTE, but it includes your remodel.
And this says $36,825 for the change.
I don't even know if I got that.
I just picked my.
So I'm not sure what they have in front of them.
That, that's what, version two is the 169.6 total salaries.
And I thought it was 36,825 or version two difference. Version one.
I, I absolutely apologize for the confusion. I'm not sure what I managed to do there. So the version two with, with the submission, there was that separate spreadsheet on the beginning. And so I think that's where that might be. So those cost increases would be from that, that, that first part of the spreadsheet where you had FTE requests.
Yes, but your version two, how did you prepare that?
Well, the numbers that they're saying for version two, the version two that I have, so I don't know where I messed that up.
But version one, you have 477,310. Version two, you have 514,135 difference, $36,825.
One we had talked, does not include the new FTE, but does include the remodel cost of 15.
Yep, because the FTE was in that first spreadsheet. So what, whatever that first spreadsheet cost was for FTEs. Yep, so what's the total?
Net cost to the county, you have 26,112.
Yes, from my, from my budget, correct. Correct. So that 26 would be added to the 169.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, that makes sense. I'm there, I'm tracking.
So version one is with Val full-time and version two is without her being?
Val's half-time with my, the normal, the way we are currently structured. Version one is no changes. Version two, the reason that number's lower is because I included that new A 13 FTE in that front FTE request spreadsheet. So it's an increased cost of 26.
112.
112 for my, for my salary budget.
So Chair.
Deb.
Why they end up doing that is because we had Pepper and she couldn't keep up. And now we have Val, and those are two very efficient ladies that can do multitasking. They're kind of like Holly. Well, they are like Holly. They're very good at what they do, but when they're telling you they can't keep up, they're not just saying they can't keep up because they're doing half-time.
Yep, the workload is, is significant. It's not tenable.
So at this time, I'm supportive of this just from being in fire administration and watching these guys. And some of the stuff I do help, and did help Pepper and Val with, but most of it, trying to do EM and fire was an overload. You're dealing with almost 500 firefighters, and Dustin is dealing with some major stuff with emergency management. Those are two areas that are very important in Pennington County for emergency services in both cases. So to try to keep up with both sides of those and, and not mix or, or try to keep them separate in a sense is a lot of work, let alone just the workload from each side. So I'm very supportive of this. Dustin does a great job. He's all over the place with his, his people and so is Jerome. And Jerome needs some help with some of his administrative. We already know in a good way. He's out in the field a lot. He doesn't have a lot of time to sit and do some of the paperwork and stuff that Val keeps him efficient with and same with this. So I think this is for us a no-brainer, for that fact, just by watching and, and seeing the efficient women that have been working in these offices and, and saying, we need some help, we can't do this by ourselves. So anything we could do to help him would be a very good, very positive.
Thank you, Deb. I, I think you're correct with that. I think this board has taken testimony and gotten information on fire admin and what's happening in that department. And so I think something that's confusing is this version one, version two, which I think, you know, we're going to get that figured out. But I think the board's gotten information on what the needs for that FTE, so.
The only, the only way we've kept our head above water is we've had phenomenal people in there, Pepper and Val. And that, that's the only way we've survived, and it's not fair to expect that of them. And, and should things change and, and we need to hire somebody different, there's no guarantee we'd have anybody near as proficient as those two have ended up being, so.
They're not the kind of people that ask for help. So when, when one of them says, really, I need some help, that's telling you, you know, they work very hard. So we need, we need to do what we need to do to get that efficient.
And I apologize for that confusion. I, I, it's hard to present, so I didn't present it just for emergency management because, again, it's an extra link with fire administration, and that's confusing as all get out for everybody. I apologize for that, but it really is a, a single issue that touches two budgets and, and I took my best stab at it.
Well, I think we got Jerome coming up next, so he'll, he'll concur on, on that. Is there any further questions? Ron Ross.
So Dustin says remodel cost of $15,000 is included in version two. So what does the remodel project, what's the scope of that project?
And so in, in visiting with, with Commissioner Hadcock, that's something that would have to be teased out. So obviously, if we put an entirely new workstation for a, a new employee in our space, we, we have the square footage to accommodate that. But it would require a build-out, a, a remodel in that front space to accommodate two workstations. If that is something that can be absorbed outside of fire and EM's budget, something that's done through buildings and grounds or the building, if there's a different pot of money that can be tapped for that, fantastic. I put it in the budget just because we need to account for that. If, 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 if the board determines that, that it won't come out of our budgets, then that certainly does not need to be included in our budget. But it needs to be, we, we need to know that if, if we bring on a new person, there are some costs associated, one-time costs in office remodel to bring that new person on. And I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose that in the craziness.
On the Gallagher, Gallagher's scale, what would that be, a what?
A 13.
A what?
A 13.
Okay. And, and would that be cost shared with the city?
Yep, 50% with the city.
Okay. What are their, their scales? Are they similar to ours relative to the Gallagher's scale?
The city?
Yeah.
Uh, no, they've taken a, well, so, so in hourly scales, I have no idea. I have, I've never been involved in hiring an hourly employee through the city scale. I know where I fit on the scale as an exempt employee. And the way the exempt scale works is significantly different from the county scale right now.
They're looking at doing Gallagher. Did you guys know that?
I didn't know that. That was my question. Thank you.
You have a question?
No, I was saying I didn't know that they were using Gallagher.
Well, that, that's good that you put the, the $15,000 in there because you're going to have computer, line movement, that type of stuff. And I think with our buildings around Crevee, they could get it done.
Well, there's some, there's some unused desks. There's, there's ways that, that we may be able to, to offset some of that. But I, I, I think, I think we need to account for the full amount, and if we don't need it, fantastic. But, but I certainly don't want to get caught short and, and not have an efficient workstation for somebody.
Is there any further questions from the board or comments?
I think we're good, except for we do need that remodeled a little bit. It's not like major remodel. But a lot of the other departments, do they have it, do it through buildings and grounds? Doing the remodels and stuff? They don't buy the computers, I know, and stuff like that kind of thing. But the remodel shouldn't be put on Dustin or fire administrator because it's not, like I said, a huge remodel.
It'll have to come to the building committee and approve, go through that process, but I think so.
Perfect.
Do you have anything else you need to share, Dustin?
Not unless there's any other questions with that, that budget.
Okay. Next.
What's the next number you guys have?
Homeland Security.
Should be.
266, 288. Homeland.
Uh, so Homeland Security, 175. That's spending authority based solely on successful grant applications. So this is a, a budget that we use to support any successful Homeland Security grant applications. So the only way money gets spent out of that budget is if it's supported by, by grant revenue.
Okay. Any questions on 288? Moving along, now we've got 283.
283 is the local emergency planning committee. This is a, the revenue for this is passed through from the state, from DNR, for fees collected for hazardous materials, facilities, and transportation companies. So again, the, the spending authority on this is based solely on, on what that check is that we get from the state. So if our spending, if our approved spending authority ultimately ends up being higher than, than what our revenue is, then we, we track that internally very closely and in conjunction with the auditor's office to make sure we don't overspend that spending authority. So similar to the Homeland Security grant budget, we only spend what we receive from the state in revenue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Travis Lester.
So Dustin, that $12,000 on the contracts, is that something new? Because I don't think any of the other ones are that higher. Is that a standard number that you put in there?
Yes. The LEPC is looking at, the, the last time we did a hazardous material commodity flow study in Pennington County was in 2011. And we are looking at leveraging some different grant programs, hazardous materials, emergency preparedness, and local emergency planning committee. We're looking at pooling some of those grant dollars to contract for a new commodity flow study for Pennington County. So that's, that's in anticipation of that project.
Okay.
But again, those, those dollars would only be spent if we have the grant revenue to support it.
Any further questions from the commission on LEPC 283? None, we'll go on to emergency services, 285.
101, 285? So there are, are three things that this budget captures. The first, under service and fees, is our cost share with the United States Geological Survey for running the, the flood warning gauges. So we have a network of what we call METWarn or meteorological warning gauges spread out throughout Pennington County and different drainages and different waterways. And so that's a, it's an incredible system, relied on heavily. And the county does have a portion of that revenue, but we also bill based on population the other partners that, that benefit from that METWarn system, with the exception of Boxer. So that was a contentious issue a while back. But the city, Rapid City, actually pays the lion's share of, of that cost share. Pennington County is the next biggest shareholder, but Rapid Valley. cost share. Uh, Pennington County is the next biggest shareholder, but, um, Rapid Valley, uh, Water District, Sanitary District, uh, the Town of Keystone, uh, Hill City, um, all share in those, in, in that cost.
So we only got Boxer that opted out?
Correct.
Okay. But, but they're all operational and the maintenance is all getting done and?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. That's a, it's a key system. Uh, several of those sites are decommissioned over the winter, uh, because they don't function in ice, uh, and ice can damage them. So there's, you know, we, we pull some out and put some back every year.
Okay. Is there any questions from the commission?
And then really the, the last line down there in, in, um, what's it labeled as? Other expenditures or grants to other entities. Uh, uh, there are two that are combined in there. One is the county cost share for the regional hazardous materials team, uh, and the other is the cost share for the regional water rescue team. So the hazardous materials team and water rescue team are a joint city-county, um, endeavor. Um, and so that represents the, the, uh, the contribution that the county makes to the hazardous materials team and the water rescue team. And those amounts have not changed for several years.
Okay. Thanks for highlighting that. No further questions? Anything else, Dustin?
I think, uh, like I said, I'm sure there will be questions as we navigate, um, the, the, uh, moving positions around potentially and, and certainly available to answer any questions and clarify anything as we move down the road.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dustin.
Thank you. Have a great day.
We'll take, uh, just a few minutes to let Mr. Drew get caught up and I'll turn the chair back over to. I think we are at.
Setup's gonna be fired.
You can also have the court.
Yep. So yeah, we're up to five.
Got your pretty jacket on.
Morning, Jerome.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good. We're ready for you.
Jerome Harvey, Fire Administrator for Pennington County, South Dakota. Uh, I'd like to recognize Chairman, Otter Muller, and we have some, uh, members of our budget committee. We have our chairman, Caleb Dustman, in the back. Uh, Charles Mott, our vice chairman and, um, member of our, uh, the budget committee cannot be with us today. He had received in a very important piece of equipment for his business. Uh, Dave Limbom, Eric Chase and Jeremy Walla, Cliff McClure and of course, uh, Todd Tobin. Uh, today we also have with us Brent Beckman. Uh, Brent has been instrumental as far as, uh, making public aware of what's going on within the fire service. And Brent has recently crossed over and joined our ranks. Like to welcome him aboard there at the DOD volunteer fire department. And of course we have Chief, uh, Sleef here from the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, the Pennington County Fire Service consists of 505 volunteer firefighters, approximately, uh, 225 career personnel spread amongst 20 fire departments. Eighteen of those fire departments are volunteer based and they cover 2,884 square miles of the county, approximately a population of about 120 some thousand people, uh, since the start of the pandemic. Uh, initially when the pandemic got started, everybody was all, your calls are going to drop off. You don't have any business. Uh, since the start of the pandemic, our call volume is up over 40% and continues to rise. Uh, I've said this before publicly and I'll state it here again, the plan to invite everybody to come live with us in South Dakota is not working for us. I know it's working for some, but it's not working for us at all. It is a tremendous load onto our volunteer fire service, onto our volunteer services, period. Uh, we've stuck with our budget, tried to stay within our, uh, means and tried to stay conservative. We've talked to you about this before. Us as, as the fire service is always very traditionally conservative and like to reflect those conservative values. We understand there's a lot of pressure on the commission and the budget, uh, keeping over 19, 19.1% reserves, but we're seeing the, the other effect of that. Uh, the big things that we, uh, talk about is an increase on workers' compensation. Some of our districts have been forced to bring on some personnel to help with administrative and day-to-day tasks. That's put a little strain on our workers' compensation, but what happens is that that goes into a circular pattern and recruit that cost and has an overall cost savings to the taxpayers across the county. The other two things that are, are weighing heavily on us is the station at Silver City. Uh, Quinn is bringing their, uh, it will be in at the next commission meeting to have their signed. We've done a bunch of hoop jumping as far as the land that's being donated to them and they are ready to go. I'm thoroughly convinced of a load of lumber got lost within a hundred square miles of Quinn or got dumped on the road. We would all be down there this weekend driving nails, building the building. Uh, they're chomping at the bit ready to go and they definitely need the funding for that. The other big ask is, and I appreciate, uh, Director Willett discussing the fact that he endorses everything. So we will take half of his budget and put it to good use. Uh, but, uh, the other big ask, of course, is for changes in our admin. The 49-year history of this office, there's only been one full-time employee and our workload has done nothing but increase, increase, increase. Uh, again, 47% just in our call volume since the start of the pandemic. If somebody would shut off planning and zoning, uh, we have in the neighborhood right now, 25 to 30 requests I have from her office of stuff that needs to be looked at. And we don't, you know, part of the office's function is not to pass that on to our volunteer fire chiefs. They have enough to do. So we try to address those, uh, questions and answers and look over the stuff that, uh, Brittany sends down to us. And quite frankly, we're not able to keep up with that. So that is our big ask. I do have Brent, like to say a few words, and I know, uh, Chief Sleef would like to get a chance to visit with you. And of course, our chairman, uh, Chairman Dustman, if you want to come on up here, he's got a, just a couple of things to say here to you.
Uh, yes, Caleb Dustman. Um, I am the, uh, Fire Chief of New Underwood Volunteer Fire Department. I am also the chairman of the Fire Service Board. Uh, thank you for taking time to, uh, um, to listen to me speak. Um, Fire Service Board is very, very supportive of, um, of this budget. Um, we had last year several, several large incidents, uh, that, um, that could have turned potentially more catastrophic. And, um, so it shows the need for, the need that's out there for, for rapid emergency response and the support of the, uh, county fire office as well as, uh, um, county commission. We are, uh, we're very supportive of this, uh, admin position. Um, those of us chiefs out in the, uh, out in the county, uh, get to see kind of uniquely firsthand, um, just the, the workload that, uh, that lies on, uh, on Jerome in his office. So, uh, again, I'm on behalf of the budget committee and the, uh, the Fire Service Board, uh, would like to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Chief Dustman. Uh, just emphasizing again, the budget committee and the work of the Fire Service Board is all volunteer. I was scrambling out the man-hours that have been put into the plan that we submit to you in the narrative. And we're in the neighborhood of about 2,000 man-hours and the majority of that's been all volunteer man-hours to get this plan and budget looking into the future, uh, nine to 10 years out. And I commend those people for taking that time and giving you a plan together. Really, uh, every day we see that and, uh, I get, um, questions, uh, multiple times a week about how do we do things here? And it really does come down to the backing of the county commission and keeping things together and doing the things that happened 50 years ago, 49 years ago to organize what's going on. Cause our ability to out-mobilize everybody is really where the rubber meets the road. And we got another taste of that last weekend when there was some trouble in Wall. We were able to out-mobilize everybody, the federal government, the state government and the states that surround us, we were able to out-mobilize them. I know that, uh, Brent Beckman has a few things. Again, I'd like to, Brent wants to come on up. And I just, I'd again emphasize the fact that Brent's, uh, actually crossed over and, uh, joined us in our volunteer ranks at the DOD volunteer fire department. Welcome aboard, Brent.
Morning, Brent. Good morning. Brent Beckman, uh, chief meteorologist, KMBN TV here in Rapid City and with the DOD volunteer fire department. Um, yeah, thank you. That's one of my favorites. Unfortunately, I have to wear it a lot more than, uh, I'd like to. I use it as a message of communication. Uh, a lot of preventing what happens as far as wildfires and grassfires is communication to ignition sources and, uh, human behavior. So, uh, getting that word out, like today, we have red flag warnings for the southern portion of South Dakota, uh, stretching across the state. And people are thinking, well, we got a lot of rain lately. It happens quickly around here. Being able to be prepared for these kinds of things is paramount. I spent the first party June touring the front range, um, looking at areas of burn scars and the response to those areas. I was down in New Mexico and quite frankly, we are shielded from some of the larger implications of natural disasters in this area. I think because of the proficiency of our volunteer fire departments, a five acre fire can easily be a 10,000 acre fire if the brush truck is not working. That's basically what it comes down to. Rural areas in New Mexico have very hard problems with getting personnel and equipment to areas that require quick action to get to those areas. Pennington County Fire is there. When things go wrong, when it's two, three o'clock in the morning, I get the buzzes on my phone. So I have learned at what times we are needed and it is all of the time. It is all the time. Uh, kind of a shocking experience really. So I'm spending most of my time immersed in natural phenomena and its effect on people and our response to it. And during my time on the front range, I had to come back to Pennington County and to the Black Hills because that's where my research brought me back because we had hailstorms coming through in Hot Springs and in Belfush and in Phillip. And we have now a week or two later wildfires and grassfires that we're dealing with. And who is showing up to those scenes first when people are injured by the hail, which they were, who's showing up to the scene when Wall is going up at 10 o'clock at night? You have the entire county responding to these incidences. Um, I believe that we again are shielded from some of the realities of how tough it can be to manage a large area. Pennington County is a large area and is maintained by volunteers holding the line. And again, you're taking something like, you know, a five to 10 acre fire that can easily, easily be much larger and much more devastating if you do not have one brush truck that is not repaired and maintained properly or one volunteer that just can't make it that day, does not have the resources necessary to get out there. And I think we do a really good job of that, uh, here. But keeping that up is paramount, given where we are heading as the Black Hills in general with the population increase and the demands that are increasing. As Jerome Harvey said, 40% is an outrageous number, uh, for a very short amount of time for calls being, uh, increasing. Um, Black Hills are a meteorological haunted house. It will continue to be in all facets of weather and natural phenomena when it comes to fires and storms and all those things. And volunteer fire departments are the first ones to respond to those incidences. And we will need them. I, all I'm going to say is that we will need them more and more and more as time goes on. And that is all I'll say about that.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
I appreciate you joining our volunteer fire department.
Yeah.
It's always nice to have someone that has that passion before they even go in there.
Yes.
Just listening to you. Um, I think you'll be an asset to us and, uh, we appreciate you, um, coming up and, and visiting and, uh, uh, supporting us. Um, there's a great group of people in there and that camaraderie, as you probably already figured out, pretty tight. So, um.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes.
So appreciate your passion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lecrae.
I'll pass that on too. I mean, I think, uh, being a volunteer firefighter and our firefighter is twofolds. It, it's not only the, the, the reaction, but it's the preventive action that you guys expressed to the community. And it's more noticeable now that you're on board. I, I've watched you and you've expressed those concerns and Jerome expresses those concerns highly when he gets a chance, opportunity to speak to on, on prevention. So the job is, is twofolds, I believe. And, and you guys do a really good job and it's expressing the prevention and the cautions and the dangers and, and letting the community know along with the reaction for when it does happen. And, and that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Commissioner Lecrae.
So on the fire stations, Jerome, um, I know we have other topics on there, but, um, I put this in my, in my box. We got it on 4/28/22. It talks about the fire departments like Wasta and Quinn and how far they are. We're talking about maybe if the other ones weren't ready. And, um, that's why I got this and showed this to Commissioner Rosskine. Um, it looks like people have secured, um, people to, um, donate the land in Wasta. Um, they're doing fundraising. Uh, some of them have, let's see, Wasta has raised 75,000 above the 500. And Quinn also, um, has land donated to them and they are raising 81,000. I don't know how much they have at this time, but, um, if you look on that paper, November 26, 21, 2021, uh, donated site prep work at the site of the new fire station in Quinn. So some of that, when they have their land donated already and they're ready to go, um, we need to look into Silver City and getting some of their stuff done. Cause I had just talked to them with Commissioner Rosskine about maybe if these guys weren't, the other two stations weren't ready. But, um, again, if they have their site work ready and they've done donations and they're going, like the one has 575,000 already, um, I would hate to, um, you know, take that and, and tell them to wait another year when they're, they're good to go as well. So maybe I'm missing something, Jerome, in there, um, on those two fire stations. But if one isn't ready and can wait till the next budget session, um, I'm going to be up straight. Um, I'd be looking at that as well if they're, if they're not ready because, um, Silver City is, is moving forward pretty quick.
Yeah, we, um, Quinn is, uh, coming in at the next meeting to have their agreement signed.
Okay.
There was some, quite a bit of, um, hoop jumping on their land and last minute stuff with the registered deeds to get all of that scored away and make sure that's legal for the agreement. Um, I'll ask, uh, Chief Sleef to speak specifically on Silver City. He's here and he can answer any specific questions on that. Um, Chief Sleef and the, uh, Silver City crew, all the departments have been working really hard on this. Uh, they've had some extra challenges up there and I'll let him address that. The two things that I wasn't clear on addressing or what we weren't, the budget committee wasn't clear on addressing in the budget was where you guys wanted that and that ask. And then, uh, uh, with the, uh, potential, um, changes in the office, we did not put any, uh, funding request in the actual budget, but that's the question I wasn't sure about was cost sharing out with, uh, emergency managers, as far as any changes in the office. So that's the two things that we're kind of up in the air about. But I'll ask Chief Sleef to come on up.
No, not, uh, how about Wasta?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sir.
Uh, we certainly can, uh, visit a little more with Wasta and talk to them and see where they're at between now and the other sessions that you guys have and, and get a, um, it changes daily. Uh, everybody's hanging right now, but we will definitely go with Chief Shile, uh, or Shell and get a, uh, get some clarification as far as where they're at and get that information back to you.
Well, the bottom line is it's budget time. Um, if we have a fire station good to go, uh, moving ahead of the others, um, you know, the others had a chance, just like Silver City to move forward.
Okay.
Let's be up straight, Jerome. Um, we only, you know, for funding, that's $500,000. So, um, if Wasta's ready to go sign the agreement and so is, uh, Quinn, uh, that's a no-brainer. But if one is still, um, waiting, can't build, can't do it this summer, um, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll talk with him and get some clarification on it. And I appreciate that. Cause we, you know, the, the Fire Service Board is going to do everything we can to help you guys on this. Uh, 500,000, this reserve, understand that. And I think we can get the information for it between now and the next time you guys meet.
And we kind of made it in Fire Service Board, uh, and, um, Phil knows that, um, even with Silver City. Um, this doesn't come every day where you get a donation of 500,000. Um, you guys need to hit the ground running and move forward on this so we can, you know, make sure that money is not used somewhere else or that this budget doesn't need it. So, um, that was emphasized pretty, pretty much every meeting. So, um, hopefully, uh, the other ones are ready to go. And if they're not, um, Silver City's ready to pull the plug on there. So.
Just emphasize again on. Just emphasize again on Quinn, the, their, again, the agreement that they'll, they have signed by you will be on the next agenda. So they're ready. They had some extra, extra jumping to do on the land there. There were some issues there that weren't, that we had to get clarified with registered deeds, State of South Dakota, just some extra layers that were put on there that weren't anticipated and it's like peeling back the onion with them.
And they raised, isn't that the one I just said that raised 75,000s to, for the local cost?
Yeah, everybody's, everybody's doing everything they can to get as, try to get as much local funding beyond just the equity they already put into it and the sweat equity they're gonna put into from here forward. Everybody's on board with that. They're trying to put together as much additional funding as they can, try to round this whole package out. The cost of building materials and all the stuff that's, you know, again, off the charts and they're doing anything they can to compensate for that.
So Jerome, on, on.
Mr. Chairman.
On Quinn's agreement, do you know if that's been routed through the State's Attorney's Office?
Yeah, the, everything what, I think goes to State's Attorney. State's Attorney's been working directly with us in the fire departments. They brought it down. We had, we added the address and some other stuff. There's some information needed. Quinn is looking at it right now. The registered deeds had one little suggestion to make and we are planning on being here at the next commission meeting to have you guys sign it. I just like seeing it looks, it almost, it looks identical to seeing it except for the legal description, address and the names.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinick.
I just want to remind everyone that we did make a commitment to fund four fire departments, 500,000. So I don't know what the sequence is gonna be, but I'm still gonna stick with the guns that we're gonna do this one way or another.
You guys got any specific questions of Chief Sleef here? This is a, a good time to ask those, if you have anything specific on the Silver City Hill. We'll say that Chief Sleef has put together a really good team and the challenges that they had is definitely were not anticipated when this thing start, first thing, first got started. And they have done a fantastic job of jumping hoop after hoop after hoop and moving the ball down the field and dealing with all the misdirections they've had. So if there's any specific questions on Silver City, Chief Sleef can answer those.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning.
So I understand that the focus now is to return back to the Forest Service and they're working with you on coming up with a.
Absolutely. Let me, if I could, just take a minute and a good morning, Commissioner. Phil Schlaive, Fire Chief, Silver City. Just trying to get everybody up to speed. I know Commissioner Roskinick and Commissioner Hancock have probably heard some of this and seen it, but we, when we left these meetings last year, we were diligently searching for property. We were mostly looking at private property to try and purchase or get donated to us for a station on the north end of our district, near 385 Rochford Road. The, we just really ran out of options there. We could not find anything. We had three really good possibilities that we worked through, you know, met with all kinds of people, Lawrence County, Pennington County, and, and all three, just for one reason or another, fell through. At that point, we went back to the Forest Service and started talking to the Forest Service about a lease. And we, we came up with an absolutely fabulous option. We're looking at a, a piece of land just north of Broad Gulch, just south of the Sugar Shack on Highway 385. So our response to that north end of our district, to Pennington County on Rochford roadside for mutual aid on Johnson Siding side is, it's perfect. It's a really, really great location. We met with the Forest Service in February, January or February, and had the discussion about them with the lease. They thought that they could do it in approximately six months if the EIA went well, so the Environmental Impact Assessment. And by April, the EIA was almost complete. That normally takes a long time to do. They moved it through. There was no red flags. Everything looks good. They are just going to use a lease very similar to Rochford's. Rochford's fire department is on leased property in, in Rochford. So, you know, just a little bit of tweaks to make ours work. And, and so that part is not gonna take very long. We expect this to be completed by August. So we have been working really hard to, to get a piece of property, to find a place to put this station. We still believe it's critical for that area. I've had, I work in Deadwood, so I'm across the street from Paul Thompson up there, the emergency management up in Lawrence County. And I've, I talk to him quite frequently at his office and, you know, that, that's a black hole. There's, it's 14 miles from Brownsville. It's actually in the north side of Rochford Road is Brownsville Fire Department. Rochford comes in just a little bit to the west. Nemo is on the northeast and Johnson Siding is on the north or the southeast. And so from our current station, it takes us about 20 minutes to get there by the time we get a truck up and over those hills. And so this is, is key. I mean, it's really, it's, it's a great spot and we wanted to be a little closer to Sugar Shack, but there's flood zone stuff to worry about there. So we're just up the hill just slightly and.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinick.
So another thing I wanted to point out, it's, it's what it is, is a 30-year special use permit. And I ran that by the State's Attorney's Office because I said, you know, Silver City doesn't have to be a deed. Do they actually have to own the land based on our agreement? And so the State's Attorney said, they felt comfortable with that special use permit. And another thing about that special use permit, there's no charge to the fire department on an annual basis, just if they, except if you do a fundraiser or something, then there's some kind of a fee. But, and that's another nice thing. You don't have to, you don't have an annual lease that, you got a lease, but you don't have a payment. So it, it is a good situation.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, Phil?
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks for your time.
Gary, will you show that paper that I gave you to Lloyd and Travis so they can read that? The fire department one.
Let's have one we got while back, right?
The last thing, as far as our large ask, we have Director of the Planning Department here. If you have any questions, her, I've asked IT Department multiple times where they could shut off her email addresses to our email. Doesn't seem to work that way. But if, Brittany, if you want to come up and say anything about the, some of the loads of planning and zoning needs, been putting in office, is a good time to ask her any questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. Jerome has been pretty instrumental in some of our reviews of our large commercial structures, especially those new event centers and those wedding venues. Because of the capacity of people in there, they do require fire sprinkler systems. And because there is not someone in our office that has that expertise to review those plan sets, Jerome has kindly and graciously been doing that for us. So that's one of the big things for our office. And with the continued development in the hills, you know, when we do seven, over seven lots, they require fire mitigation plans. So those get sent to Jerome's office too. So those are some of the things to consider from our office that, that asks that we're having for Jerome. So if you have any questions.
Any questions for Brittany? Thank you, Brittany.
Yeah, we're not gonna bore you with any other PowerPoints or pie charts or anything else, so. I appreciate the time, appreciate the support of the commission. And again, emphasize the point that it pivots around the commission. Everything that goes on with this fire service countywide and pivots around you people. And I can't, can't express again the appreciation we have towards you guys' support.
Commissioner Lecrae.
So Jerome, you need to tell about, okay, so you told about the group insurance and the difference, and then how about the reserves and why those are important?
The ability to build a reserve for us is important for us, especially it will take a, take an example of, we, we're planned out nine years on the items that we know that need to be replaced. Hard items such, hardware items such as our Cascade trailer supplies breathing apparatus, breathing apparatus on scenes of incidents, that's seeing upwards of increase in calls. That's probably running 100 some calls now this year. That, we know the life cycle of that and when that will run out. We have our communications network that we have. We know the pieces, some of the pieces and parts of that that need to be replaced and when those things are replaced out along with our vehicle, et cetera. As far as an actual emergency response, we need to be able to stop the fire, keep it from becoming worse and turning into a disaster such as Chief Desmond has talked about. A good example of that is the Hawk Draw fire that happened last year that was on private property. We did have to bring in some state-sponsored resources, specifically air assets and dozers. Those are specialty, specialty resources that we do not have. And there's a cost associated with that. And we need to have a checkbook that we can get into, that we know what is in there and to be able to, in confidence, spend that money to stop the fire from becoming worse. And that's where our reserves help us out. We're planned out nine years on that. We know the items that need to be replaced. We're replacing some based on availability. We have several items that will be replaced in the 2023 budget. And we also have the ability, or need the ability to be able to hire in those additional resources. And without that reserve built up, we don't know what we have. We don't have that, there's no confidence in that. And that reserve really is, you guys are building that bank account so there's no surprise. It's the worst thing that we could do to you, and we've talked about this in the past, is come and say, surprise, we have to replace this $100,000 trailer. And we didn't bother telling you guys, but we've been working. We, we want to avoid that type of surprise and that's why where our reserves are so important.
So do we have a total, Cindy, maybe you have or Jerome, the total amount we have in reserves right now?
I'd have to ask Cindy if there's a specific number that she has.
Yeah, because we needed to use them on some major fires that were happening.
Yeah, we're still working with the state on some of the bills and stuff and that. So some of that money has not gone out yet, but we know that it's there. But she'll have those specific numbers.
Just give me one second. As soon as I stood up.
Couple of years ago, the Commissioners decided to start budgeting $100,000 to an assigned reserve within the general fund. So at the end of this year, there'll be $200,000 in there. Estimates for the end of year for his fund itself is gonna be at about $300,000.
That's concluding this year?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Cindy. Any other questions, Jerome?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinick.
I just want to remind everybody that July 10th, Silver City's having their annual social. So if you like ice cream and sloppy joes, eight o'clock, Phil, is that when it starts?
Fox March will be early in the morning and then we'll start serving food about 10:30. We have 75 pies lined up.
It's really good.
Get rhubarb?
They have a silent auction as well. The silent auction is pretty cool because they got some really nice items. We went there last year and then the pie is amazing.
The day before that is Rochford Day. And of course, they have the water, water, the barrel fights there with the water fight. So it's a busy, busy weekend for the fire departments in western part of the county. Silver City is definitely the social event of the season.
Lot of fun.
Thanks, Jerome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks to your crew.
Thank you, Jerome.
I'm gonna ask Jennifer from Black Hills Council to come forward. And yesterday, we had a brief conversation relative to our dues for Pennington County. And I think it's a good idea for Jennifer to come in and explain what's, what's been taking place at the council, projects, shortage of dollars, shortage of employees.
Sure. So what's been taking place at the council in the last quarter? So the deadline for the next DNR funding is this Friday. And we are in the process of submitting $58 million worth of requests for funding and 35 million of those are for Pennington County. For those people who aren't familiar with the council, we cover nine counties and provide some services to Ogallala Cota County as well. So that is just one program, one quarter, 35 million in application work that the council has completed. And we are hoping to get all of those out the door by tomorrow. Historically, if you, if you look at our dues structure, there has not been a raise in our dues for over a decade. And that was a pattern set in place before I became director. At the time, there was a part-time director and one less staff at the council. And with the influx in funds that are being poured into existing programs that we administrate and write applications for, there has become a very urgent need for another staff person at the council. So we are looking at, for the first time in, in almost 12 years, restructuring the dues, but, but not exactly. The dues are gonna stay at the same 52 cents per capita, but just, we're hoping to apply that evenly to all of our members. So all of the cities and counties within our nine county region, cities, cities that are above 1,000 in population is what was established before I came, our members. And then anybody below that in any HOA, sanitary district, fire district, town, road district, those are all eligible for services from the council just because Pennington County is a member. So historically, if you look at the work that the council has done specifically just for Pennington County, based off the dues you've paid, you've paid 67,000 since 2000, since the year 2000 in dues. And not including Rapid City or Box Elder, funds secured, we've secured over 58 million just for Pennington County and different entities. I mean, right now, we have, you know, Rapid Valley Sanitary District is utilizing our services. We have West, Westbury Trails Water Association is one of those with Box Elder. We've also offered technical assistance to numerous other HOAs, Green Valley Sanitary District, High Siega Meadows, Time Cliff Estates. I mean, there's, the, the list is almost endless when it comes to, you know, who needs services from the council and who we're providing those to. It, it is impressive that the council has been able to operate as they have for so many years without raising the dues. But it is definitely time for us to take a look at the restructure. I had made a proposal to my board, which is made up of our member representatives from each of our members. And I, we did not leave our board meeting with agreed upon proposals. So most of them had asked, counties are going to be impacted, I would say, more so than the cities. The cities will only see an increase based off of the 52 cents per capita. So if they didn't grow, they're not going to see much of an increase if they decreased in population, which we have some of that in our region. They will see a decrease. The reason counties seem to be disproportionately affected by what I proposed is because in the past, the dues structure was based off of 52 cents per capita minus the population of the dues paying members. And when I checked across, across the board with the other planning districts in the state, they're not using that formula. So it may not be the right formula. It's a proposal that I made to my board and I, there was no answer coming out of that. So we'll have to have a special meeting to come back after I've talked with, you know, the full commissions and been able to provide some information to you. So really, I'm here to answer any questions you have. I, I did bring printouts. I know that's a little bit old school, just because I had to collect it from different places and we had already printed them out for our meetings. So if you want a more intense information or packet of information, I can send that with you. But I'll just leave it to any questions from the commission right now and.
Chairman.
Commissioner Lecrae.
Jen, you always do an amazing job. It is very hard at what you do. And I appreciate everything you do. The only thing I would ask is to see what the other counties and cities are. If you could send us that, contrived meeting. You do have the counties and stuff that are in it, but not the contributions.
Sure. Do you want to, do you want to see their, so I have, I'll, I'll hand these packets out and then I'll see if the information I have is not enough. I'll, I'll by all means get that to you.
You're talking within this district, correct?
Well, just in, around, not just our district, what others, how, how their formulas work and if it's the same formulas.
So I'll tell you, like, for example, CCOG is the only other, I'm sorry, Southeast Council of Governments out of Sioux Falls is the only other planning district that does the per capita minus the dues paying members. The difference is they have a nine The difference is they have a nine thousand five hundred dollar base. So all of their counties pay nine thousand five hundred dollars. If you look at Bennett County for the last 10 years, where they're one of our more rural counties, they pay six hundred dollars. We go from six hundred dollars to ninety-five hundred dollars, we'd lose them as a member. But more so they would lose vital economic and community development services that they, they wouldn't get elsewhere.
Right.
So, and then what they do with that ninety-five hundred dollar base, they also add a dollar three per capita based off that number. So we're far below what any of the other districts are, but I, I'll, I can provide that.
Well, it would be nice because maybe it's not twenty-two, maybe it's thirty-two, maybe it's sixteen, you know what I'm saying? Based on your formulas, you need to be fair in both cases and so do we. Like I said, when we've needed you, Jen, you showed up. So since Gary, I think is the one that brought you forward and said, we needed your help and then said how efficient you were. And I knew from other entities that you were, because you know, I always check. But you have been very instrumental in a lot of things that we have done in Pennington County. And again, like I said, when you call Jen, she's there. So I appreciate what you've done. You're very efficient and you know your stuff. So when we have those questions, if you don't know them, you get back to us. And for me, that quality of service is worth every penny that we have to, have to pay. Because as you just said, you got fifty-six or a million dollars worth of service for a lot of our areas in Pennington County. So.
So there is a, it's an older, again, I was working, because I'm doing a lot of the planning work and to help offset the workload for my staff. I haven't had as much time as I'd like to dedicate to just director duties. But I've been trying to be efficient in finding the research that was, has already been done by previous directors in the dues discussion. The, there is, if you go back to the back, there's a chart that looks like this. And that is an example of what was pulled in two thousand and six. Just so everyone knows, we are collecting less in dues from our members now than we were in the year two thousand. We were giving more in dues from our members in the year two thousand than we are now. And we've been at the same rate since two thousand and thirteen. It's not about efficiency. It's about, at this point, it's about workload and needing additional staff due to the amount of federal dollars being forced into some of these programs that we've always administrated. That because people know there's money, there, we're getting more and more calls for technical assistance for applications. And then once the applications are awarded, which most of them are, we also do all of the administrative work. So Davis Bacon, environmental review, drawdown requests, you know, project inspection reports if they're needed, just depending on the program. So the administration of, of the funding is as important as getting the funds secured for the project. Because there's all the federal regulations that accompany those funds. And to keep those entities that have received the funds kind of out of hot water, it's, it's really important that those are administered correctly. So the, there is just a lot of work that maybe is, it's hard to explain to people who don't do it every day for a living. So yeah. And then also the planning work, we're getting more and more requests right now for comprehensive plans, which is definitely a task that should be done within the planning districts. That's where that should rely. We, we are able to offer, I'd say, you know, it's affordable to most communities in the comprehensive plan when they go out and if they want RFP for private. It's, it's really not affordable for many of them. But we're getting, because of the growth that's happening here, we're getting more and more requests for the comprehensive plans. And I'd say for one staff, it's probably only, you know, reasonable to have them working on four, maybe five long-range or, or short-range plans that are the bigger documents in a year. So you get capped out on what that one staff work output can be. And then we have to tell everybody, we can do this for you, but we can't start it for eighteen months. Well, then they're, they need these plans now because of the growth and the Governor's Office of Economic Development has come back. They're one of the programs we help administrate for and do applications for. They keep coming back to the communities and they say, what does your comprehensive plan say? And they say, well, our comprehensive plan is thirty years old. So much has changed in those thirty years. So there's a lot of services we should be offering and want to offer to our members, but we just can't because we're at, we're at max output. I sent my last email at twelve thirty AM this morning and the first one at four thirty. So, and this morning. So we're really, and that's just because of the deadline, Friday or the Thursday deadline. But it really has been that way since I've come on as director. It's been two years of kind of non-stop, really heavy work. And I just know that at this point, I'm either going to lose staff. Takes me about two years to train new staff to do what we do before I can just let them loose. So it's important to me that I keep the morale up, hopefully balance out the workload so that they can go back to just really doing great work. Chairman, sorry Lloyd.
Commissioner Agar.
Just, just one other thing. We're a big county compared to other counties as well. So she's not covering just a small area for a county. There's sixty-six counties and we're one of the biggest ones. The other thing is, is she is Elevate for us. She is the economic driver for and has been, which we didn't have for a long time. She has moved a bunch of projects forward and she has known the information if, like I said, if not even on ARPA or anything. Some of the stuff wasn't Ms. Jen's job and still helped us get it done. So.
That is one of the benefits of being a member is that we, we try to be on call and ready and available for technical assistance.
And, and you are. You're, you're very technical in everything you do. Jen, I don't know if you know how efficient you are, but I've been impressed with you. And for me, anybody that can work as hard as you do is showing us that you care about Pennington County and the projects we do. And I'll just tell you guys, I've been here for a while and I haven't seen anybody that really comes up and, and Gary, you could vouch for this. In economic development or anything that's here, that's here, that's here, you call them, they're there. The minute we call her, Ms. Jen, you, you just, I, I just, I'll keep saying that. For me, that's impressive. I, I have businesses and if I, if people are like that in business, holy cow, you could move your business ahead so quick. It's not even funny and she has done that for Pennington County. So I know, Jen, I don't hang around you or see you a whole lot in some things and other things I see you just everywhere. Helping and getting things done and hearing about what you get done for other counties and other people. So again,
I appreciate those comments. Thank you.
I don't know if you knew that, but I've never said those things to you, but I'm very impressed. And, and if we had to give the twenty-five thousand, so the twenty-two, nine, six, five, the twenty-five thousand, they were giving Elevate and other people fifty and whatever, but twenty-five thousand is, is a for the efficiency and the things that are done with this office is amazing. So I guess.
So I will, I do want everyone to understand the twenty-two number. We typically try to get our dues assessment letters out prior to the budgeting process. So our members know what to plan for. I took the liberty of sending those out without an approval of my board, just so, because people were asking. They're used to getting them. This year was different than the previous two years I was director because of the change in census. We knew there was going to be a change in dues. That number is modest in that it doesn't, it doesn't reflect fifty-two cents per capita. You guys are really an anomaly for me and I, I want to be as fair as possible. I didn't want to hit you with all of that all at once. So what I did was I divided the difference by five years. And we'll just, you know, we can carry that internally, I believe until, I think what's going to happen is if I get another staff, we'll be able to balance that out with local contracts. When we bring in another staff, we can bring in more local contracts.
Right.
Things that are not covered under dues and that will help offset that. So it's a modest proposal, even though it looks big compared to the years before, but it's still not that full fifty-two cents per capita. I just didn't want to hit you with a huge increase all at once. I'm trying to be fair.
I'm going to be up straight. When Gary said that we should go do this, I'm like, okay, whatever. What have they done with us? What have they done for us before? Because me and him were chair and vice chair then. And so I'd like to give a year or two and say, okay, what you actually do. You prove what you've done. So once you prove what you've done, I'll, I'll keep saying the twenty-five thousand or the twenty-three, as you say, twenty-five thousand for Pennington County or twenty-three is a no-brainer for all of the different entities that we contribute to and, and we go to. You've got it done. So for Pennington County. So that's the bottom line. That's why I keep saying that fifteen thousand, we started with, I thought eight-five back then was a lot because again, I didn't know how efficient you were. And you just kept getting more and more progressive in, in what they've done at first. And then when you came onboard the last couple of years, it just boomed.
Well, that was probably COVID, but I won't take all the response, or the cares in our book, but.
But you got to follow through, Jen, and you do that. So I appreciate that.
Thanks, Jen. I mean, I, this is a, I would say this is a classic case of some of the stuff that's happened that you haven't seen the, the increases throughout the years and probably some lack in the leadership from previous leadership as, as far in the organization, not moving, thinking ahead. Because the dues fell apart, you know, some agreements fell off way back, way, and Deb's right, you know, this isn't something new to us. You know, back when we were on the city council, we were, we attended the meetings way back then, you know, we're talking old time days, ten years ago. But I mean, you identified in the last couple of years, what's going on, where you need to be. I think one of the things I was impressed about during our meeting the other day was the list of stuff that you guys are doing that are in the works. I mean, that shows the amount of work, workload that you have. I remember I did, you had, there's over a hundred.
Twenty-nine, I believe.
Hundred and twenty. And so there was discussions on, people are coming into you guys and throwing ideas at you. Could you research this before they even want to do an application? And I, my thoughts process is yes, this come to a head right now because there's a lot of stuff happening out there. Grants that are more so now than ever before that we've seen. But I'm impressed with, I mean, what you're doing. I mean, it, you, you're doing the hard work. You have to do the ask and you're trying to alleviate it a little bit by, with the plan that you have. You know, but I do believe you're going to need that extra staff member and you do have interns that are, that are helping you now. That's good stuff. So I think, thanks for stepping up and taking the challenge and doing the hard ask.
And I wanted to have the 2021 performance report. You guys will be getting that, all of our members will be getting that every year, hopefully starting in January. I'm behind because I have been doing planning work. All of the other planning districts provide that to their members and I believe we have not done that for our members. And that's part of the reason why maybe our members fell out of touch with us and didn't know the work we were doing. They're just unaware. Because we just, every time we get a call, we just handle it. And so having all of that, you'll have a return on investment, how much you've provided to the council over the years, what we've obtained in funds, all the projects we're working on for the past year. Having that all in writing, so you can look at it and flip through and compare if you want to other counties in our region and see what you're getting for your dollar will be very helpful. It was one of my first goals when I came on as director and unfortunately I've been slammed with planning work and it, it became a second priority and it shouldn't have. So I'll get that to you hopefully by July fifteenth and all of our members will have that. It'll make these conversations much easier.
Jennifer, I know that you got a ten o'clock commitment, but I just want to say, I appreciate you coming to explain this. And the number of projects, the hundred and twenty projects show only a portion of the work that you guys do. Because you have responded to us each time that we've had questions relative to various projects, whether it's our project or Rapid Valley Sanitary District. You've always been willing to provide the advice that we needed. So I want to thank you for being available to do that for us and sorry about the long days.
It's okay. And thank you for the opportunity. I'm so glad that Holly reached out. I may have missed this opportunity had she not reached out. So I appreciate her being in touch with us. And just an update on the Rapid Valley. They are one of the applications I talked about in the thirty-five million. We have fifty-eight million dollars that is going to be requested. DA and R currently has seven point two million left in the ARPA dollars. So that is just our district. The other planning districts are all probably working around the clock as well to get theirs in. So that seven point two million left in ARPA is not going to go very far. What I guess is anything that can't be funded this year because they're out of funds will get deferred to the January first funding deadline. It'll require an update to their application, which is kind of sad because it's work that we'll have to redo, but just wanted you to know where that's at. So what I'm saying is it's very competitive even for that Rapid Valley Sanitary District application. Not a lot of money for a lot of projects. So.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Just, just real quick, could you identify your intern, introduce your?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. I think you guys might know him. Alex, come up here. So Alex is our summer intern. He was vital in helping me get together, get the information put together for the return on investment. We've had to go back and kind of dig through files and figure out those numbers because it wasn't readily available for me when I took over. So he has been just an amazing help, just and, and just helpful in every way. He's kind of a really good worker and so that makes my job very easy. Summer intern. I don't know if he wants to say anything more about himself, but.
Well, we just saw Alex a couple of weeks ago also here as part of the, the local council.
Yeah, I think I was here for the last commission meeting.
Yeah. So thank you and hope you're enjoying your summer and.
I'm enjoying it a lot. I know you're going to get a lot of experience.
Alex, what's your title?
Summer intern.
No, you're, you're the, you're the city council's vice chair.
I'm the vice chair, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
What I really enjoy is that eight hundred and ninety, the one return on investment. I mean, to me, that just pretty much tells it all.
It really does. And I, again, that's why those performance reports are so important and I'll get you guys that as soon as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Ron Jeffries is here. Ron, you want to come forward? John, it looks like he's on vacation.
Well, you can tell who gets to sit in an air-conditioned office and who has to go out in the field and do the hot work, right? Yeah, John is with me here, but he's got another meeting that he's going to probably have to depart for real quick here. But Ron Jeffrey, General Manager, Central States Fair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So Central States Fair has been a longstanding partner with you, as you're well aware. I won't go into a lot of the historical pieces. I will tell you that we feel like we're good stewards of the property, Pennington County Fairgrounds. We have had some recent successes in working with the city of Rapid City on not only providing the, the monies that you provide to the fairgrounds, but leveraging those monies and also getting improvements to the vision funds for both the new stall bar number nine. And then of course, this last nine hundred and eighty thousand dollar vision fund that John was able to secure is what we call part of that west campus remodel. It started in the Sulee Building with a new floor in there, which will allow us to host a variety of different types of activities. Last year, our budget was five hundred thousand from the county. This year, we've asked for five thousand twenty-three and change, twenty-three, seven hundred for the budget you're going forward. That is basically the four point seven six percent increase if the county's looking at another project. So I would just stand by for questions and see what you want to know.
Questions, Ron.
How much did you say that you're, that you're asking from us this year?
Five thousand twenty-three, seven hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred thousand twenty-three, seven hundred. Five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred.
So the increase would be the twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, which is the.
So we're giving them five hundred and something thousand every, isn't it levied? Tell me, tell me that I'm missing.
Well, I'll let Cindy explain that because it's.
That's why I'm like, am I missing something here? The fair and accumulated building in general.
Suppose it another.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any.
Right.
I'm sorry. I think it got put back in the other tab.
Yeah. I think it did because I, I thought I saw it yesterday and then I couldn't.
We meant to pull it out and put it in the fairgrounds tab. Maybe I didn't get it.
I think you put, there it is. It is in your other, it's last page in other. Because I did see the five hundred and seven, five twenty-three, seven. I was like, okay, they're asking five hundred now.
Flip through there and the fair is in there.
Okay, Miss Cindy. I'm like, okay.
So Cindy, explain that.
Okay. So the county consolidated levy fund, Central States Fair, so the fairgrounds, accumulated building and the general fund. So that is all under one levy. So any new tax dollars that can be generated to support those three, we first fund accumulated building, fair, and the rest goes to general fund.
we first fund accumulated building fair and the rest goes to general fund.
Okay.
So anything that you increase his budget by you decrease general fund. Not budget but the the revenue that supports that. I mean twenty three thousand. What's that?
What was the revenue that came in from that then? I guess we would maybe I'm not understanding.
The um the amount of tax calculation for uh twenty two pay twenty three is five hundred and forty seven one six and five and that's because you have to take the five twenty three that's the five percent.
So it's all part of the 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 general levy? Commissioner? It's not broke out that that's that amount is specific for Central States Fair it's not a percentage of levy.
So the five forty seven one sixty five tax calculation for county fairgrounds?
Mm-hmm.
And they're taking five twenty three seven out of that?
Yes.
Okay and the rest goes to general?
Nope the rest of that that's in there has to stay in that fund because that's where it's levied at so that will build the reserves in the fair fund.
Okay so they they've raised that through the levy it's not that we're taking that out of general anymore.
In a sense you're correct but it depends on how you look at the numbers.
But the taxpayers literally gave the five forty seven because we increased the levy because the fairgrounds needed taking care of it.
We increased the county consolidated levy which does the three funds.
Oh right.
Or decrease it I mean this year it's it's gonna go down because of values so. Even though we can collect more tax dollars the levy is going down.
So just a question now that we're it's not just fairgrounds why why couldn't we do that with fire? Like we did for fair.
Because fire is its own fund and it's its own levy.
Okay because it's separate from the other three okay thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry Ron.
Thanks Cindy.
I I didn't see the new number on here.
Any questions are on that. Ron it's it's exciting to see the projects that John has been able to put in gear at this point in time with the dollars that you've received not only from us but the major dollars that came through from the vision fund this year. Uh it's gonna make some some substantial improvements on those facilities uh county facilities out there so.
Well and I think one of the other things that that John and our team's been able to do is we've been able to leverage uh support from within the community both from Central States Fair foundations Central States Fair themselves but also through sponsors that come back in and work with us on other types of improvements not even necessarily included in this but I certainly feel it's a great return on your investment so.
So I drove by there the other day John and um the uh yeah. By the uh new stall building it looks horrific to the east so um it used to look pretty nice around that edging. Uh now it's back to looking aesthetically not so lovely. Um are we going to improve some of the
Yeah.
areas in that again?
Yeah so John Kaiser Central States Fair um so Ju- June was probably the busiest month I think we've had since I started there. Um so a lot of our um beautification um will take place right before the fair here we did kind of allocate three weeks of just simmering down for a while but we went about four straight weeks of no days off for anybody um and three of those were new events including a ninety car demo derby that was there for a week which led into a caving convention of nine hundred cavers that showed up um which was a huge economic driving factor for the community. Um and then that led into our single barrel race our biggest barrel race which brought in about four hundred ladies from around the area. Um so we've just been swamped um I'll be honest we've been shorthanded um you know everybody's kind of facing the same issues that we are but um like I said we did we will we kind of shaved off about three weeks here um towards the end of July um this week we'll have the biggest team roping in the Midwest coming in that'll run for five days and that'll be about twenty four hundred teams that are there um so we're just we're just trying to tread water at this point. Um I do agree some of the beautification things have kind of gone by the wayside on the east side but if you look at the inside of the building um there's a beautiful new finished concrete floor in there that's gonna provide a lot of new opportunities for um not only agriculture which I feel like we excel at probably best in the state but we'll get to open it up for a lot of youth sports to have a place to go in the winter time um so while it might not look good right now in about a month things will start turning around and we'll get get my maintenance guys uh but we're gonna give our maintenance guys a little bit of a break and then when they get back um we're gonna hammer out some of those issues that you're seeing so.
Well you when you don't want the livestock on anything to trample it down you probably need a fence even with those uh wood looking sled you know with pole and then two poles that kind of stuff and then if you would do me a favor Lindell's uh bench uh the man uh gave a lot to the fairgrounds um do something uh that's pretty awesome for that because it's sitting on some bricks right now.
Right.
Um to be respectful to him.
Yep.
Um John uh that that means a lot to me I think it means a lot to our community on on what you do with that bench and and how it's treated so um he's gonna be watching uh his family's gonna be watching that we're respectful of that I'm pretty sure so. Um just didn't have to say that here but it just came to my brain uh you do a wonderful job fairground does amazing job. Wow in the last uh what how long have I been here seven seven and a half years uh Ron and John how far have we come uh as a team of these uh Pennington County to make that fairgrounds uh what you guys have made it today and we couldn't have done it done it with both of you so first I'll give you a little bit of beautification and then uh kudos because you do work very hard and we have been shorthanded but it all what it looks like is also a big representation of who we are too so um I appreciate all your work.
Any other questions for John or Ron?
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Scott Guffey.
Morning Commissioners. Um I'll go through my budgets and then we have uh some folks from the conservation districts that'll come up and would like to visit with you too a little bit. Um so I can't go through uh the summary of the narrative I got for you I actually have some money to offer up for you guys.
Cool.
Kind of a drop in the pool but it's a little bit um as I mentioned in my narrative there uh the increase was due to the new wage scale and then also the new hiring of our operations manager did get that person in place on Monday and uh when I budgeted I budgeted for a family plan on the health insurance he's just taking a single plan so there's uh eight thousand dollars total savings there'll be four thousand coming out of the six one five and then four thousand coming out of the six one six budget so total of eight thousand going back to back to the general wherever you want to put it. Um so yes six one five are uh the this the state tag on it is weed control we're now kind of calling it our natural resources budget our main budget. Um like I said there was a there was an increase on the wages because of the wage scale and the new hire but uh I did cut on our capital asset budget by twelve thousand that's on vehicle replacement um this year we should I bumped it up for this year's budget because we ordered the uh one ton diesel hopefully we'll have that in November. Next year I'll just be buying a gas um I'm looking to get hopefully a cab over uh right side controls for doing our county rightaways um that way one person can be sitting right there and they can look right down instead of being over on the other side it'll be right above the weeds striding on the road so we'll see if we can get I think we can get one pretty reasonable around that twenty five thousand dollar price range so.
Mark will enjoy that.
Yeah that's he's he's the one who's been asking for it so.
I'm pretty sure he loves your job.
He does yep um and I slipped and then I froze operations uh our operations uh cost um six one six uh the state tanks and has grasshopper and pests we call it our forestry budget that's kind of our winter time budget when we do our forestry work. Uh once again that increase was due to the uh wage go wage scale adjustment um like I said we'll drop four thousand out of that. Uh four thousand dollar savings due to the healthcare um froze operations and everything I will be coming in um probably in a a month or so we do need some equipment uh we just got done with our Norse Peak sale up there where we were doing the shade field break and then we had a two hundred acre timber sale up there that we did. Uh we were able to generate twenty five thousand dollars off the off the timber that we were able to pull off that sale so we have some older collector revenue. Uh then we had the uh savings in the title three that they unspent title three monies last year so we do have some monies there to buy some equipment uh I'd like to buy and I I came in last year asking for it a drum masticator uh right now we have a disc masticator drum which throws debris quite a ways but you can get a lot of acres covered. The drum masticator doesn't throw debris as far and we can it'll be better for roadside use um that's we got pulled last year I just got enough it's around thirty four thousand dollars and then uh we also have a gravel head that we use that we grab the logs that one's getting worn out um it's springing a tooth on it and stuff it's we're hard on equipment so um that one's gonna probably have to be replaced too so I'll get those numbers together and hopefully it won't be a whole lot that I'm asking for to cover the additional costs but I I do have the older collector revenue to cover most of that expense so I'd like to get it done this year then pushing it off into twenty three.
I don't think you're really hard on equipment it's where you have to use it.
Yeah it's tough work. Yeah it it wears out equipment.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Roskin.
So Scott what was it that you you were using we uh on the road title wise we looked at a piece of equipment.
Yep we got a trapped tracked bombcat skidster that we use and then we have the attachments we have that uh we have that disc masticating head that's basically spins with a sixty inch.
That's the one that throws it.
Yep and it kicks the it it masticates into a you know shards of about three four inches and it'll shoot it everywhere.
Placement will be something will do the same thing.
So it's it's a drum that rotates and then it yeah it it it's just two different applications but yeah they they basically accomplish the same thing when they're done so.
Commissioner Haggard.
One thing you know about Scott is probably the most frugal person I've ever met in government so um if you haven't noticed since I've been here efficient effective and frugal he will figure it out and get it done with every penny he has um he doesn't ask for anything he doesn't need and he if he needs something he looks for those grants and those title threes and all these things and um I've never seen anybody more frugal uh with government money in my entire life so um I think it's he's pretty awesome uh he also um is very efficient and effective of what he does if you've known anybody who has a passion for weeds and uh environment uh it's uh Scott Guffey so um can't say much more than that I just I I've always admired you for everything you've done because there is an an area that you're kind of weak at so um and uh you have some really passionate board members and people that work for you so when the when the leader works hard it's hard with um it's hard for the other people to stand around so that that means a lot um to us in Pennington County for what you do for us because you can't go anywhere in environmental or uh in like the forest service and then not know who Scott Guffey is so um that means you're efficient in everything you do and that you're very friendly and easy to work with and you get things done so um people are getting a lot of kudos today in one sense and I'm not as honorary as I look but I also know um people that work hard and and make a difference for us and you're one of those but your budget reflects on everything I've said Scott so thank you for what you do sir.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Lekrak.
I know you still got more of your budget to go through here but uh uh a ditto on what uh Ms. Haggard said but I I just want to take the time to congratulate you on your appointment to the NFAB board. Uh I know when I was alternate I I listened to you because you you're the foot on the ground you know what's going on so I am actually pleased that you got on there because your input's gonna help that board it's a wide variety of organizations that you all work with and you and so I just want to take the time to acknowledge that they got the right man I'm glad they they got you in there.
Thanks Lloyd I'm excited to get get to work on that board. Um the remaining two uh this the two one six six one six that's the title three grasshopper and pest control like I said that we use that for forestry uh really restricted on kind of what you can use those title three funds for but we can use it for uh fuels mitigation fire mitigation that's what we use it for it goes directly on the ground um when we're working on the forest in the winter time um so we did get a bump in that we got a bump in our allocation. Um I talked to uh Brian Mueller and and Har- and Jerome Harvey they also take a bite of that pie too um search and rescue and then fire as well. Uh I asked on the because there was someone spent funds last year on both those both those ends too so I said well do you really need the bump this year or can we keep it in in six one six and get it on the ground for doing some more fields work because that's where really where we're needing it that we're severely behind in the fields and pre-commercial thinning work and the black hills so this one it'll go directly on the ground so we we got a bump in that um and then we just kept their allocation the same as last year so any increase it it came to us so I appreciate those two guys for offering that up to us and letting us use it in our in our budget here. Uh and then the last one that I'll cover here before I bring up the conservation district is uh the one one oh one one six six the uh predatory animal budget that's our uh allocation we paid at the South Dakota game fishing parks to uh help pay for the state trapper so that really benefits the ranches of Pennington County for uh um it's mainly cattle control they can come if they have any issues with cattle or some other predators that are are um eating on their livestock they can call me the state trapper and they'll take care of it for them so it's it's a big benefit for for our a community and especially our ranchers out there. So if you don't have any more questions for me on those I will uh introduce our conservation districts folks here. So we have uh Christie Smith she's new she's uh East Pennington she's been on the job for about two months. I told her just come here and introduce yourself don't be too hard on her because she's still. And then we also have Lindsay Mater and Tiffany Kanupi Lindsay is uh the manager for West Pennington or Pennington Conservation District and then Tiffany is a board member on the Conservation District and I know Lindsay wants to say a few things Christie if you want to just introduce yourself.
Morning Christie.
Good morning how are you?
Good.
Good I just wanted to say um thanks for letting me come in and say hi and put a name and a face together and I'll figure life out in the Conservation District there trying to wrap my arms around the entire thing.
Super so you live in Wall or?
I live about twenty miles south of Wall.
Okay.
Yep so now in the middle of nowhere but it's good.
Yeah.
Welcome in.
Lindsay.
She's been with us for a while.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good um before I start I'd like to thank you guys for your continued support it's really appreciated. Um just a reminder of what we do I guess uh we provide our tree program where we sell and plant trees for your egg community and we sell trees to um everyone else. We provide uh free technical support and site visits for those tree plans and we also help people find out their soils so they know what trees to plant in our area. Um we also rent two no-tail drills um that service Pennington Mead and Custer communities. And um some new projects that we've been working on I think the last time we mentioned that uh we were doing um thinning grants for private forestry landowners. We're still doing that so that's going really good we've had three of them known through the Conservation Commission so that's a successful program. Um in the last two years we've applied for grants um through the NRCS which is called CIS it stands for Conservation Initiative Strategy. And we've gotten two of them funded one of them was to help improve water efficiency through irrigation um in um the Puputa area. And for that project the NRCS dedicate uh allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to egg producers. Uh Scott Guffey put in seventy five hundred dollars to um remove invasive species of uh plants and he also put in for state grant uh for twenty thousand dollars to convert irrigation lines to pipelines so um that's been successful so far. And then in twenty twenty one we got another CIS to help uh improve water quality and quantity in Rapid Creek and um. And um there's other conservation practices included in that to help that uh mission go through. On that one, the NRCS dedicate uh allocated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to egg producers. We didn't pass put in seventy-five hundred again. And West Dakota Water Development District put in fifty thousand dollars. So in the last couple of years, we've gotten egg producers close over eight hundred thousand dollars. Um so it's been pretty good.
Super. Question for Lindsay.
Good job, Lindsay.
Thanks.
Just good job.
So Lindsay, you're operating, I presume, out of your office again?
We're um moving back in the office.
Are you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, finally.
Finally. It's been a long two years.
And and Christie, I I presume you're in the office at Wall?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay. Little different arrangement there between the two. So.
Yeah.
Super. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I just wanted to, forgot to mention before I brought them up, is uh no increase with them. Uh last year we got them up, so they both have even e- equal allocation. It's a total of sixty-five thousand, thirty-two five to each Conservation District. So. Um I think it works out. It's seems to be working at least this year.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Now, Scott, do you want to just share with the commission where we're at? Uh. I know I'm a little bit behind the eight ball on working with the, in the portal with the Forest Service, but uh you've been pretty involved in.
Yeah.
Couple of Zoom meetings and now we're in that period where the public has forty-five days to comment.
Yep. Yeah, and I'll give praise to Jennifer Sitzma again, Sitzma again for Black Hills Council. She's uh stepped up and is kind of coordinating. The South Dakota side counties' efforts. Um she's uh kind of running a weekly Zoom meeting that we have with the surrounding counties that we all. Make sure we're on the same page and we're we're divvying out the assessments. There's. Twenty-some assessments that we have to go through. So we've kind of uh. Divided out to people who are kind of experts in those fields or have a pretty good background in it. So that with it. So all of us don't have to read all the assessments. Each one can go through and then we're gonna compile our uh comments, go through them and. If uh if the majority don't agree with the comment, then the county can put it in separately. But we're gonna try to. Combine our comments and put it as one as as a group. Um the state has also been sitting in on those incomes as well. So. Um good, good collaborative effort and uh we're moving forward.
Well, I just wanted to point out that it's pretty time consuming. I mean, those assessments are very lengthy and they're hard to understand. Uh. It is what it is. But uh anyhow, I appreciate you uh doing what you're doing relative to the assessments and and. Kind of keeping the other counties in in line.
Absolutely. And then once we get finalized comments, we'll share them with the board. So you guys are all on board before we get them submitted.
Thank you.
Those assessments are designed that way.
Yeah, confuse people.
It'd be difficult.
I took the easiest one. I'm having problems.
Well, Mr. Chair. Since you're on that subject, I mean, the NFAB board, I remember this, you know. Plan coming out several years ago, the director changed and everything went around. But you know, part of the board that that Mr. Guffey's gonna be on, I mean, they deal with the ATV people, the. The tribes, uh industrial, I mean, there's everybody, environmental. So it's a good group. So having uh Scott on that board's gonna, I think you're gonna help them more than they're gonna help you.
Yeah, we got some good individuals got appointed. I'm looking forward to working with them as well. All right, Scott. Thanks, Commissioners. Good to.
Thank you.
Next, we have four H extension. Glad we have some young representatives too.
We do. Good morning, Commissioners. Um I'm Matt Oden, um current chair of the Extension Advisory Board. Um thanks for uh for having us and giving us an opportunity to come and speak to you. Um we got a couple of four H members and I'd like to give them an opportunity to. Um introduce introduce themselves to you to you um and share a little bit of information about the program.
Hi, my name is Arthur and. I am ten years old and I am a member of the Rushmore Riders and Explorers Club here in Penning uh Pennington County. This is my third year in fourth four H and already have learned so many things about. So many things and always have fun. One club that I enjoy is the Busy Bee Club. We get to take care of bees and make honey to share and sell. Now I know how important bees are and how to make candles from the bee wax. Four H also helped me talk in front of people and not to be afraid to ask questions. To learn more. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, so so where are the Rushmore Riders located at?
Sure. So I I can speak about that. Um and my kids are also involved in the Rushmore Riders and Explorers four H Club. Um so it's a. That club, um we've got members from all over the county, um primarily from in the Rapid City area.
Okay.
Um but yeah, from all over. Um it's not a exclusive. You don't have to live in a certain area. Um but yeah.
Yeah.
So Chairman.
Yeah.
Arthur, what do Rushmore Riders do? What do you do in your club? Do you remember what you do? All the fun things you do in your club?
Um, no.
Do you ride horses? Do you uh do science projects? Um do you, I I remember judging stuff where you end up, um you said you learned how to speak in front of people. Um they had classes for that. Do you take classes at the four H building? You don't remember?
That's a lot of questions.
So so a lot of, as with a lot of our four H clubs, the Rushmore Riders uh is a generalist club. So we do. Kind of everything that it's kind of an all encompassing for four H. Now, Arthur talked about the Busy Bees four H Club. That one's specific to a project area. So to like the beekeeping. Project area. Um and then there's, you know, we've got like uh shooting sports club. We've got um. The dog club. There's, there's others that are specific, but um yeah, we've got a bunch of generalist clubs that kind of teach, you know, how to. How to run a meeting and how to how to conduct yourself in a meeting. Um as well as having opportunities for public speaking. For learning, there's often judging contest or judging classes that are brought into some of those meetings so that you could take those skills out. To later use at a judging contest, things like that. So so there's a lot of variety. Um.
Well, we.
So.
We did some um stuff for um. Kids so they wouldn't have recidivism and and different things in uh Pennington County. And this is one of those programs that if you want to keep kids out of trouble, um kind of like Girls Club was for me. Um I'll keep saying this every year, four H is it. It has everything in encompassed encompassed in it for classes, like you just said. Um and I was like, believe it or not, like Arthur, um trying to speak even in twelfth grade. So um. I appreciate everything that you guys do at four H. It's just amazing. If you don't know what four H does. Um what you find out um for the kids, everything you guys do for them. So. I appreciate four H and and always have supported your programs just because we have programs. Uh tons of programs in Rapid City to try to keep kids out of trouble and you guys have done that for years and years and years and people just don't know about you as much as you thought they do. But. You're getting the word out because people are are getting more and more in the know. So great, great four H program.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Lucas Wires. I'm I'm his brother and I'm also a member of the Rushmore Riders and Explorers four H Club. This is my sixth year in four H this year and I'm thirteen years old. Um this county has provided a lot of several opportunities for me to participate in and I'm just gonna tell you about a few that stand out to me. First of all is shooting sports. Shooting sports really helps with um my my hunting abilities. So we can um. Have do stuff like that. And the competitions are really fun and competitive to do with your friends. That really helps you know people more and stuff. And the local events events here help you prepare for state events. So you know, like all of the. Um how hard it is to prepare and do all those things. Um all these next to these workshops. Um I did a wood wood burning workshop, which was led by like by Jane at the county office and. Um they helped. It was really fun. They helped me make my first wood burning project and actually got a purple at achievement days on it. And achievement days, um preparing for presentations is um very helpful. And you have, you talk to a judge about important topics to you and um it really helps with public speaking. And the judge helps provide information for you to um be get better at what at you're speaking and. Put more information into it. Um also, there was a talent show that um really, it was really cool to see all everyone's different talents and skills. Um without the support of our county, these opportunities wouldn't have been possible and I wouldn't be wearing them today without them. Thank you.
Thank you. And how old are you?
I'm thirteen.
Thirteen? Okay. So tell me a little bit about the about the shooting sports.
Um well, there's, you can do a lot of different things. There's BB gun, air rifle and air pistol. And you just, you know, you shoot targets, try to get, do the best you can and practice.
So can you get your safety uh permanent through that program too or?
Um no, I think sorry.
Yeah, so that would be separate, but but gun safety, um and archery is also a component of four H shooting sports as well. And safety is is really a a main pillar of that program. Um teaching safety and then marksmanship.
Yeah, so. Okay, excellent, excellent.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So if I'm reading this right, you have four hundred and thirty-eight enrolled four H members?
Yep.
Is that uh from previous years or what do you see for a trend? Uh you know, as Deb said, I I think it's an excellent program and being nice that. How do we encourage more folks to become members, I guess?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I and I can't tell you right off the top of my head how that relates. Um you know, sometimes we see the numbers kind of fluctuate up and down. Um I think we've stayed fairly constant in that four to five hundred number. Uh that's a great question. And if there is. We're trying things like providing um workshops and um trying to get and where Jane gets into the schools and. And teaches uh kids about about some of the projects or some of the the things that are emphasized in four H. So. Those are all ways we're trying. Um if there's other opportunities, we are more than open to them. Uh because we we do want to see the program continue to grow. Um I think it's an excellent program. I I have history with it. I was in four H from the time I was eight. Until I graduated out when I was eighteen. Um I've got my own kids in it and they're now participating. And I think there's just so many things that can be gained from it. There's so many, you know, so many leaders that have a four H background. Um.
Exactly.
So I I don't know how um.
Well, if you think of something, you need our support, you know that we're here for you.
Perfect, perfect. And and I absolutely want to um want to thank you all as Commissioners. Um. I I've gotten to know all of you through um the involvement with four H things here, um with my involvement in on the Extension Advisory Board. And I really do appreciate the support that we get. Um one thing I wanted to kind of highlight that's in um. So they they came out with a subsequent four H uh new strategic plan. And one of the focuses in there, and I think this is really an excellent thing, is that. You know, in addition to youth development, um focusing on ways to develop our youth. To um teach them about opportunities in South Dakota and try and keep those youth in South Dakota. Um because we don't need to export our talent. I mean, we've, we know we have some of the the best and brightest kids in the country. And if we can keep a good share of them here, you know, that's an important thing, especially for our for our communities to keep them in in South Dakota. Um so I I thought that was something from our strategic plan uh that I think is is really of note. I mean. I don't, I was involved in one of the previous uh development of of a strategic plan for South Dakota four H. And that was not something that was in there. Um and I think that's awesome that it is now. Um I think it's probably been a missed opportunity to this point.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
We have one of those senior men- members in the back that usually speaks for the four H. So maybe she'd like to come up and say. She has been with us uh for a long time and been in four H. Um it's always nice to hear from you if you'd like to come up.
So so Matt, question for you.
Yes.
Uh when I was in four H in my first few years, uh I would call ours, most of our four H programs are were general in nature. But we did have a camp that we could go to in the summertime. Do they still offer camps for some?
Yep, there's still four H camps offered. Um there's, there's several. There's some around the state, some that are out here in the Black Hills and then some that are on the eastern side of the state. So yeah, there's still four H camp opportunities for for youth to go to.
Okay, very good. Good morning.
Good morning. Deb. Is that your name?
I think one of our most valuable resources are our youth. And I think when I've been up here before, I've talked about being a four H. Being in four H from the get-go. Back when I was in four H, it was a social gathering for the families and the parents learned just as much as the kids did. And I think we still, through um workshops and things like that, we can still offer. Opportunities for parents to learn right along with their youth. Um but I've seen four H from the, through the eyes of a a member. Idolizing those older than me. I've seen it through the eyes of a leader. Um a parent, my son was in four H. And but I think what hits all of our pocketbooks is as a taxpayer. If we can get our youth to be self-supporting and contributing members in society. That's a, that's a A plus for all of us. And I think that's what we're all after. And I so agree with providing opportunities. For healthy choices for kids. And this is definitely a healthy choice. So again, thank, thank you again, each, each of you. And I would welcome you all to come to the fair when the exhibits are on display. Um. Go to the County Horse Show. This year it was down in Hermosa with Farm River, Custer and Pennington participating and sharing expenses. Um what are some other events um that are going on?
Sure. Well, there's, there's a ton of them, you know, across the state, but even in our community too.
Locally.
Yeah, um you know, some of the workshops, there's, there's always uh some youth development um days for like. Presentations, public presentations where kids can do that. And I I know some of you have helped with some of the judging um in the past and and we. Certainly thank you for that support and would welcome it in the future as well.
Sure. Can you tell them your name?
Oh, yeah.
Patty Bruner. Old enough to vote. And how long have you been? And pay taxes. Patty, how long have you been involved in in helping out and volunteering for four H?
Volunteering? I don't know.
I. Was it last year or the year before Patty that you were recognized for the South Dakota four H Hall of Fame?
Oh, yeah. Twenty twenty, wasn't it?
Okay, yep.
Yeah. That's when they didn't have the the event at the South Dakota State Fair for the Hall of Fame and so. Good year to be.
Yeah.
Patty, Patty is the contributor of how this has been successful and fought for everything that forehead. Four H has went through and I I think I heard fifty years or something like that. And I can believe it. Um one tough lady that actually gets it done um and has moved these programs way ahead. So. That's probably, and I'm gonna guess why, um you should have been recognized. And they did recognize Patty. You have contributed. So much to these programs. You're the one that got me involved in some of this and I'm going, okay, whatever. And then I got bummed, but okay, now I I see why you love it. Um it just is huge for the.
Every member that steps up, every parent that steps up wanting to become their child to become involved, I think it's so important to support them. You know, it's good.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
No, I was in scouting as a an assistant troop leader. And to make our troop be as successful as it was, we needed the parents to participate. Parents can't sit there, drop their kids off and say, I'll be back in an hour. The parents, we were lucky because we got parents involved. And and it just created a synergy that uh we we started to produce some Eagle Scouts right and left. And. So I appreciate your your volunteering and 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 others that uh. You know, that volunteer their services to make your program as successful as it is.
But you're absolutely right. It's a team effort.
Mm-hmm.
You know. You know, to to have things succeed. It's not just the volunteers, it's the county leadership and the parents. It's so important. You know, to have the parents involved and their support because without them.
Well, you're doing a good job.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Do you have any questions for us or?
Any other questions, Matt?
Congratulations on the whole thing.
Thank you, thank you all so much.
So Holly?
Yes, sir.
Do we have others?
Well, none that have appeared. We, I mean, I could go over. Some of the other subsidies that you have. There's really no changes um except for um.
Where are they at, Holly?
Um, this would be in your outside request.
In others, I need to go move my vehicle. Seriously, when I showed up at the parking lot, I couldn't get in because your truck was in the way, so. Behind me and I had to park in the side street, so if I could. If it's okay with the commission, could we take a five-minute break so I can go?
So moved.
Five minutes.
Yep, it says that he affixed the fees.
So Holly, I don't know if there's any reason we need to go through these uh these others. I mean, we all, we have it in our booklet.
Yeah, it's it's very standard, Mister Chair. The the library is increased by three percent, which is the CPI, which is set in contract. Um, the only other one um.
The legal services, is that a was that an increase, do I remember?
That was an increase in that one as well um.
Uh, one that's in there and I can speak on behalf of that, that would be the uh request from our Pennington County Council of Agent. Which is uh thirty-five thousand this year. It'd be up five thousand from last year. Uh, that would be due to the increase of services and the increase of fuel because a lot of the. What we support are meals on wheels and so even this last meeting, uh they indicated that uh. The IRS is uh at sixty-two cents a mile now, so that would uh be one of the reasons. For the uh request uh for an additional five thousand for two thousand twenty-three. It's a really good uh group. The Menelusahan April left as director and the new director is uh. Of the Menelusahan is uh replaced April in our committee and then uh. Is it Anna Whitman? She's on there and she's with Monument Health and so we really got it. And then we we have a uh. Lady that's directly associated with Meals on Wheels, so we got a really solid group.
Okay, good. Commissioner Lacroix.
I I just mentioned the same thing as as Ron is on the Community Health Board. That's standard. And uh it looks like they're asking for six thousand over what they did previous year. But uh between that and VMS with the medication and stuff, those are pretty standard.
So Dakota Plains Legal is asking for a twenty-seven point four percent bump a little over hundred, hundred and four thousand. I presume that's. That's rec- is that recommended by the uh Office Public Defender?
Yes, the the increase for them is in order to hire more staff. Is why they have such a um an increase at twenty-seven percent over last year's contract round.
Chairman.
They need a half-time attorney, a full-time paralegal and increased legal secretary assistance.
All who runs our office, I had talked to him and he said they're taking on uh higher level cases too that were passing off to them, so. That's also why the increase is there because a lot of the cases are. Yeah, so they're taking on more work and if you see how many cases they get, um they really. They work hard over there. Like to see the comparables sometime with ours, but.
With all the asks, where are we at? Like if we fund everything that everybody asks for, where are we at? How much are we over where you have already figured?
If I sit here and talk loud, can y'all hear me so I don't have to be on record?
You're not on the microphone, unfortunately.
Just grab her microphone and pull it over.
So so explain to me how the the new employee requests. Are these all of them? So is is this number included in your sendee that you're going to provide us?
I did not put that in there.
Where are you looking, Gary, for new employees?
Uh, there's a tab that's called uh New Imp right here.
New.
New Imp.
Okay, so after the discussion yesterday of um the Silver City. And you guys had said that, you know, basically you didn't set anything aside last year for Silver City like you did the others by motion. But I went back in this morning and reduced the unassigned fund balance by five hundred thousand, so if we give. If you give Silver City um five hundred thousand, the estimate for the. Unassigned fund balance and general fund is going to be nineteen point two percent.
Nineteen point two?
Yep. And I did give you a a new means of finance this morning. Okay, so that is what that includes. So um I did not go in and add. What is it about almost three hundred thousand?
Yeah, two eighty-four.
Okay, so let's let's just.
Little total of seven eighty-four four extra.
If if I do two another two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, and I didn't look at that. I know all of that's not going to be in general fund, but I know a portion of emergency managements will come from. General fund, so I just did the whole amount. That takes us down to eighteen point three seven. Yes, with everything that's been asked for. Yes.
With the employees.
That that includes the request for FTEs, yes.
And the five hundred for Silver City.
And five hundred for Silver City, yes.
That would cover everything if we did that.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Well, I don't think there's any doubt that, you know, I think it was the intent of this commission. And I'm speaking strictly for myself of what my opinion was. Uh, when we had the fire districts and fire departments come in, I think we gave every indication that we'd give all four. Five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, Silver City was the one that was not ready because they didn't have didn't have the land, so. Um, I I think that. I don't think there's any doubt in my mind that that we need to hold to to that commitment, so.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Headgum.
They were one-time funding and we used that one point five from ARPA for the one hundred, oh, one million eight hundred. It was one-time funding and we said if we found it in our budgets and we had it in our budget for the five hundred thousand, so. I keep hearing the commitment. We said we'd like to do that. We we had to look at the budget, so we weren't all committed to that. We were committed to the one point eight because we knew we had one-time funding, but we needed to look in our budgets and I had told the Fire Service Board to be up straight. That depending on what our budgets look like for the five hundred thousand, is it important to me? It is. Is Silver City important? It is, but um I don't think we were committed in a sense. Um, Ron had said that I'll be up straight to them on the dais. That that same time, that is a district and I uh can respect that. But uh for the one-time funding is where we were totally committed. If we were moving that forward and we have it in a budget, I think that would be. Pretty awesome, but um that wasn't something that we had to do uh this year as well, but. Um, if we have it in our budget for the five hundred, I am for that. Of course, because that's emergency uh services, anything to do with first responders and needing what they need is good, but. Um, it wasn't committed only because, like I said, it was the one point eight five that was one-time funding. That's why we did it, so. If we have the five hundred and I did tell them that fire service, we need to look at our budgets and if we had that five hundred and Phil knows that. That um we could move forward on it. So if if that's the intention of the board, I'm with you, but. It wasn't a have-to thing.
Can I just throw something out there? I know that, well, I think we all know, we're going to end up bonding at some point um for future projects. Tom has reached out to me. Interest rates are starting to go up, so he thinks it would be wise to start working on securing funding now. Before the interest rates continue to rise. Um, with that in mind. If we use, we had discussed taking the. Allowable expenditures of general fund. Using ARPA funds for those and then moving what wasn't spent out of general fund to accumulated building to start funding some of those. Projects.
Yes, ma'am.
If we used five hundred thousand of that, didn't transfer it to accumulated building. Use that for Silver City. Then we would bring our reserves back up.
Good point.
Thanks for that clarification Cindy because that was what I remembered. A lot of this. Uh, the money that we we saved and allocated out last year was money that was. I if I'm correct, was some of the cuts we requested in the budgets. Am I on that line? Because that's that's why we took, we didn't, we didn't spend it all. Uh, we didn't allocate it all out. We put some in the building. Uh, accumulate fund just because, you know, because.
Okay, wait, wait a second. We're talking two different things. We're actually talking COVID dollars is what we was talking about for the fire departments, not ARPA funds. And I think you're talking ARPA funds now that we didn't spend all of it.
Our, okay.
Well, there was a fairgrounds, you're right Lloyd. I think there was a fairgrounds. Remember, we were going to give three, but we put it in somewhere. I don't know if cumulative building or something. Remember, we're going to do the parking lot and we didn't do it because we gave the levy. So there was some of that one-time funding that was still left a little bit.
About three hundred and sixty thousand.
And we did transfer that to accumulated building promotion last year.
Okay, so you're right, I'm I'm splitting things up.
That was your motion, Lloyd.
Yeah, it was. But I'm getting confused between the two funds, you know, because we I've I I've gotten some blowback from some of the money that. We allocated out and for that, but I think. I think it's possible what what you're talking about to do is is fair and I think. Uh, I think uh between the employees asks and even with Silver City, if we can get that done, I think that's. It even is that even as you said, you were at eighteen point nine, I I think it's fair. It's it's pretty good.
Mister Chair. And relative to the new employer request, I think we need to weed that out a little bit. I don't necessarily agree with all those uh requests. Going forward.
And Mister Chair, I'm just going to ask a question. I know last year we had a goal of twenty percent reserve and we we were off it by a little bit, nineteen point eight eight. Are we gonna? Are we gonna consider trying to get back to that original goal from last year to twenty percent? Are we gonna keep it right around where it's? Currently sitting just as a as a board?
Well, if they end up taking that five hundred back out, what's that do for reserves? Because you're going to put it in. I mean, that's going to be huge.
That's where it takes it to eighteen point three seven.
Yeah.
Okay, if we take the five hundred, if we don't take the five hundred out of unassigned fund balance. And we recoup that through the transactions with the ARPA allowable funds that the sheriff is putting together for us. Um, from his allowable expenditures.
There we go.
And we do fund all of the FTE requests, we'd be sitting at about nineteen percent.
And that's with, like I said, all the people that ask for a request besides just FTEs and the five hundred.
Yes.
With Jan, um who else came in?
Well, I don't, I didn't have the increase in, but that was what, twenty thousand, the increase for Black House Council?
I I put it in the commission budget at the fourteen thousand, so I'm like ten short. Commission budget.
Okay, so that's that is not in there.
Twenty-five instead of twenty-two nine or whatever something, if that's okay at the board. Usually what we gave to elevate twenty-five to fifty years and years when we first had them.
Mister Chair. I I understand. Mister Roskin, that's on the employees. That's always been a big thing for this commission as far as. We go through the the employee list and we decide whether they're needed or not. But quite frankly, from when I put HR and each department said, I mean, we can approve this. But I have the feeling that a lot of that funding is going to be coming back at the end of the year between arbitration and so forth, so I don't think. You know, yes, it's on paper, it's going to look good, but you know, some critical ones, I mean, you heard Judge. Liffle today with attorneys and so forth, uh and the deputies is kind of the big one, EMs and. So I I really don't have a problem approving the employees this year. I mean, we could go through if you'd like and have a discussion from each department head to explain why they need to, which they've always done, which is. Which is probably a good idea because that holds them accountable to come in and explain what their needs are, but uh. That's where I'm kind of at with that, you know, with with trying to fill the positions, we're we're struggling, so. It's not like you approve it and it's going to be filled tomorrow.
Why did they put deputy on both of those instead of just state's attorney or what they needed the? Deputy is second in charge.
I don't think so. I don't think that's the indication here.
Okay, I guess that's.
They call they call the the second person is chief deputy in the state's attorney's office.
And then deputy.
And all the others are.
Deputies?
Yeah, it's like deputy auditors, deputy treasurers. They are all deputies in that department, including state's attorney. So their deputy state's attorney is their entry-level position.
So. Mister Chair, Cindy, first reading needs to be when?
Um, you have to pass provisional in July, so you could do that at the July nineteenth meeting.
I I like what you just last said about. Approving the employees and that five hundred thousand, working that out and. Proving that as a provisional and then that gives us time. To change and work with what we need to, so do you need a motion?
You can't approve the provisional until July nineteenth.
To July nineteenth.
Um, if if the board wants to give direction as far as approving FTEs, those would have to be motions because I know you track those. And then I can add those in um based on the fact that we know the fee is going to go up for Black Hills Council. I can put that in. Um, Lori Wager sent me an email in regards to some of her revenues. Which are going to go up a little bit, couple thousand dollars. I know Janet said yesterday that one of her revenues is going away, that eight hundred dollars, so I can. Adjust all of those things and have that ready for you for July nineteenth for approval of the provisional. And then, yeah, she can work.
That would be nice. That way we can think about on the FTEs, what we talked about today and stuff. Something for against on the FTEs, just depending on um, yeah, I'll visit with some of the people on them.
Haven't heard from the sheriff yet on his budget hearings and from Shannon. Haven't heard from the sheriff yet on his budget hearings and from Shannon. Those will both be July fifth.
So I, I kind of like that direction to give auditor, I don't know what you guys, well, we still got to hear from Kevin. But that at least gives her something to prepare for that.
I don't see any changes yet until we look at the whole totals and what everything on that spreadsheet looks like. And we'll get that hopefully. How long does that take you to do Cindy? Based on these chain things.
Based on what we've just discussed, I, I can go back up and finish that up. I was just going to look back.
Will that also put like what the levy would roughly be at too?
Yes, you have that. I gave that to you this morning.
What is it?
Um, when we were working through the budgeting process in twenty-one for twenty-two. I had estimated that the reserve unassigned fund balance for general fund was going to be about nineteen and a half. Even though we were going to end up at about nineteen point nine at the end of twenty-two, we ended up at twenty-one percent. So I've been conservative with my estimates.
Yeah.
So to say nineteen is not horrible is what I'm kind of getting at.
Do you have a plus, minus, or three? Yep.
In reality, it will probably be more. Now, there is the, the fact with, you know, inflation and those kinds of things. Maybe my numbers will come out the opposite this year. I, I don't know. But I just thought I would throw that out there.
It'll be nice to see where our numbers are at with everything you've put together and what everything, uh, you've said today. And see that spreadsheet and then that makes a difference for.
I believe we'll be sitting at nineteen percent.
I, I like it. Thanks staff to get, good job.
Five hundred in there right now.
That is, that is with taking the five hundred out of unassigned fund balance. But yes, still granting that five hundred thousand to Silver City through other means.
Giving it nineteen percent reserves with that.
I like it.
That five hundred thousand bringing up a little bit for percentage, right? You have to put it back into unassigned, is it?
I've already done that in, in what I have in front of me.
So two or three years ago, weren't we at about less than thirteen percent? There we was, there we was thirteen for reserves.
Yeah.
This is what you're talking about, showing the living wage here.
So Deb, on the, on the county fire.
Yeah.
What are you thinking of as far as what's, what's the max when you're looking at for that reserve to be? I mean, how many years are you looking at doing that?
I think by the time you're done, you're going to have to have at least a million in there, wouldn't you say?
Okay.
And then once you've got that reserve in there, because they always have unexpected, you guys already know, flights and. Throwing those red stuff on, you know, the planes.
Yeah, slurry.
Fire slurry, thank you.
Okay.
Um, just different.
So, so you're looking at that being long-term, I mean, we're not, yeah, that's a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
That's protecting the emergency services for those people that need it.
Hundred thousand, if I remember right, comes from. Help me out.
Built?
Yeah.
All right.
That's where.
It's a million and a half or million six or something like that.
Okay.
Well.
Isn't it?
Goes in all in general fund.
Yeah, it goes into general funds, but.
But then it's actually for that kind of thing, pilt Lloyd was talking about.
Yes, pilt goes all into general fund.
That's where the hundred thousand's going into fire for the reserves every year is out of that pilt.
Well, technically it's just coming out of the general fund because all pilt goes into general.
That's how we kind of discovered it last year that part of that funding was.
Why it made difference in what it was, what pilt was actually intended for.
And I think that, that was part of the problem at one time with, with that was it, it built up. It may mean we weren't getting, but it was getting built up and then decided there was too much reserves in the fire, wasn't there?
Well, I think there's like ninety-four percent.
Because of them reducing the levy.
Reserves in the fire fund right now. And that can just, I mean, that can keep accumulating. But the purpose of leaving that assigned fund balance for fire in the general fund. Is that if the county needed it, the board could take that out of assigned reserve. So if the county had an emergency, not just fire had an emergency.
Right.
It's available. If we move it to the fire fund, it has to stay there.
Yeah.
So we could set the limit at five hundred if we wanted to or.
I'd do a million, but it should be twenty-two, yeah.
Backup.
Then I, then if you do that, put fire funds, um, put it at half.
This is why I don't let people look at all my stuff.
You already know, before that's what happened is they had reserves built up.
Yeah.
That's what happened Lloyd.
Yep, no, that's, that's. When I work year to year, that's what happens.
They didn't need that much reserve.
I know what I mean, but you don't.
Dropping down.
Yes, yes.
Cindy, how close do you think we are to, uh, talking about this bonding?
Um, I'm going to be giving Tom a call this week.
Okay.
But I am actually going to need direction on how much we need to bond.
Yeah. So, which obviously has to come from the building committee.
And I don't know how much that's going to increase our bond payment, of course. Part of recovering on the bond payment, if we're going to, excuse me, if we're going to. If we know that we're going to bond and we have to bond, last year you guys had made a motion to start building reserves and accumulated building. And putting six hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that. Part of that could potentially be used to help cover the cost of some bond payments.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Well, I don't think there's any doubt we've got to do the bonding. We're not going to be able to move project, move, yeah, even with the jail project without it.
Right.
How much are the cumulative or building committee members, how much are you guys at last? It was twenty-eight million. And we put how much in sixteen or something in ARPA, right?
Ten, ten from, ten from the ARPA dollars. And it was last I heard, it was somewhere probably between twenty-eight and thirty million.
And then there was another six or something like that, six or seven, remember, because we didn't use it all. Uh, this last, we only used five for, five something for, uh.
Well, that's.
That balance, that was.
That's separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, but wasn't the other six or whatever that was left out of that for the jail?
Hopefully.
Well, we, we wanted to, wanted to use, we want to use.
All of it at first.
Yeah, as much as possible.
That's what I meant, there's six something there.
But we can't use, we're limited at ten for the jail.
Yeah, ten, there you go.
So, so that other six that we committed to.
Yeah.
Building fund, what do we commit that to?
The, the other, this.
From ARPA.
Okay, so part of that you gave to Rapid Valley Fire.
Yeah.
And then the other part is what we're going to be, um, offsetting with the allowable expenditures in general. So we have unspent in general to transfer to accumulated building.
Okay.
So that would be less than five hundred thousand if that's how you decide to fund Silver City, which is probably wise. So whatever is left out of that eleven million is, will go eventually over the course of the years to.
We actually received those payments, huh?
Yes, we did receive the other tranche.
Okay.
Just this, like, two weeks ago maybe, three weeks ago.
Eric did, um, Eric, I'm sorry about bonding on anything.
No. No, we didn't, we didn't. We haven't talked about doing any bonding there.
So in conclusion, you're going to draft up the budget with the five hundred thousand, as you said. With the employees, give us the numbers, the levy, and you'll have it out Tuesday's commission meeting for presentation. And then by the second one, we'll have time to discuss and evaluate and do all, and we'll have a hearing from Kevin, Tom and all that. And then the next second meeting of the commission in July, we'd want to pass, uh, the provisional budget. And we still got time till what day? End of September.
I do have one question for you. I know Dustin brought forth a version two. Is that where he included the fifteen thousand? Does the commission want me to include his version two budget in what I give you on the fifth or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that had.
I know it doesn't come all from general, but it, it does, so.
So I, I got into tail end, but the budget request from him, is that all from the county? Or is that yet to be split between the county and the city?
It's in his budget, it would be split.
Okay.
So I'll look at that. I mean, I'll get his FTE addition of the halftime, I guess you would say, to where he has an FTE. And if I'm correct, Jerome already put her in as a F, FTE in his.
Yes.
Original. Yes, okay, so that's already in there.
Thank you for looking for that solution for the five hundred because we didn't have it committed. And I didn't know at that point where we're doing the five, that's why I said last year, I didn't know based on the budget. But I'm glad you found that solution, which made sense to the bonding because it's something well-needed for them. And they're moving forward thinking we had that full commitment. Not that we all didn't want to do it, it was the cash flow that was the issue.
Right, thank you Cindy.
I, I'll just say thanks for, Indian Holly for doing the budget process deal. I mean, I think, I think the department heads came back with the general increases that they needed.
Yeah, last year with that extra funding just killed us.
I think it went well this year.
I, I do have one request or ask.
Uh-oh.
This is.
We quit.
I'm, I'm on that Lakota, Lakota land tour. And among commission, our planning commission this month, is anybody available to either swap the month or a date? Because I'll be, that Lakota land tour, I got to do Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
What date, your next month?
It's July, this month, July eleventh.
Yeah, I'm not available to us.
I'll do.
You'll do it? You want to trade me just one day? Okay, thanks.
Then if I need you in that other month, I'll call you. If I don't, I'm doing it.
Okay, appreciate it.
The fire needs to redo his personnel budget.
Because it's only like half a day usually. Be a big one.
So did, did planning elect a new chairman or does that take place at the next meeting?
Next, next meeting, whatever the new will come on.
They're going to miss Rich, he's pretty amazing. Did planning elect a new chair?
No, they'll do that at their first meeting in July with the new person.
Okay.
So that's, you're going to be for that one, July eleventh, their first one.
Rich was amazing, amazing, uh, planning commissioner and a very good chair.
Yeah, he was.
Be hard to replace. We'll see how, I haven't met the, or seen the other ones at work, so. Are we done?
I think we're done.
Move to adjourn?
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, indicate for same night.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.